Budget meeting of 2018, we will be proceeding as we always do, rolling downhill. Point guard.
I think the first thing that we wanted to do was, we talked about Open Gov and what's on our website. So, we do have that loaded now, and Stephanie was going to go through kind of an overview that people can, that have an interest in looking at this online can go and pursue further, but she'll kind of go over how it works.
Okay. So, up on the screen, I have the front page of our website, which is www.burlingtoniowa.org. And if you scroll down, Open Gov is right there on the first, on the front page. So, you double-click, it will open up. So, Open Gov is a site that we subscribe to. We upload all our financial information to. It's going to show revenues and expenditures, basically. We also have a check register out there, and it's being very slow. And since we haven't gotten all this, okay. So, I'm just going to show you a few things, and if anybody has any questions, go ahead and feel free to ask them, and then even afterwards, Annette and I could help you through looking at anything you might else want to look at. So, it defaults to our first report, and it always goes to this annual. Views is the spot you want to be, right here. These are going to show all the pre-populated reports we have set up, which is the easiest way to look at this information. So, right here, this is showing us all our, all funds, all expenses, and all revenues. So, you can see, this is showing you a chart, obviously, and then if you scroll down, you can actually see the numbers that this chart is pulling from. The last column is our FY19 budget numbers. So, then to drill down and look at what makes up those numbers, you can, you know, go back to the top here and click on revenues. Click on it again, and it'll start drilling down to all the different types of revenues.
Nice.
As you do that, you can also scroll below, and it's drilling down here, too. So, if I want to go back to where I just was, there's this back button up here, so I can go back, and then I could drill down, right down here, too. If I hit on revenues, revenues again, and then it shows me the different types of revenues. To go back to the original report, just hit reset, and it'll take you back. So, these reports are pretty general, they're, you know, high-level, they're $78 million of revenue. So, as you scroll down here, you'll see we've broken it out. Let's go to details of the fire department expenses. So, this is one way to look at it, and then this is just fire department. What's nice is you could change the graph up here to a bar chart. You can see of our fire department, of all the expenses, personnel makes up 91.5 percent. And if you want to see, okay, what's personnel? That's our wages, overtime, pension, insurance. And then, again, it's broken down by percentage. So, the salary and wages are 56 percent, benefits are 16, insurance is 20 percent, what overtime is, so. And again, the numbers are all at the bottom here. We go to see salary and wages, breaks down like different categories. So, on the side here, you can see we've got police, I mean, we have some of the major ones, police, fire, library, swimming pool, the ones a lot of people like to know, golf course, rec plex. But if there's any others you might like to see out here, we can create any report, we can get down to any information you want, it just takes some time in the system. So, also, on, if we scroll back up, the checkbook is another option that's right here on the left-hand side. And we haven't been in here. So, basically, what this is going to show you is all the different checks rewrite, you can sort by vendor here, you can sort by date, the amount of the check, description. Let's go down to general fund. So, these are all the expenses that we have over the, out of the general fund. Like I said, you can see there's a telephone for City Hall. Scroll over, it just shows you the different, different information on that, so. That's all out there for anybody to do a search and look at different things. And then, under current year, that's just, obviously, what it says, it's going to show you, shows you each month how some of our expenses, what they went through, and then what the budget is. And then, also, if we go back to annual, I forgot to show you this, under views, also what's under, if you, sorry, if you go onto the filter side, that's right here. This is where you could, you know, make up your own report if you wanted, or call in at nine, we'll do it for you. We also have these documents. This is last year's budget in its entirety out there as a PDF, the CI, five-year CIP, starting with FY18, and then this is the November's treasures report. So, you can always, you know, they're in your packet, but if you ever want to reference it again, this is the easiest and quickest way to get to it, and this is our November's treasures report. And we update it as we present it to the council, December's will be out there after we present it at the work session, so. Does anybody have any questions? Is there anything else, Jim, you wanted me to show them, or?
No. Just, you do get, people can get, go into as much detail as they want to, doing a review of what's being presented for them, or to you, as part of the budget. It's a pretty flexible tool, but it, I mean, you do have to take the time, and depends on who wants to really take the time and what a given interest might be.
It's available, though. Point guard.
Okay, so, I get to go through sheets that haven't been gotten through yet. Our original budget meeting was at the end of the first regular council meeting and, first regular work session, I think, in January, and there was a few sheets that were in there that I kind of wanted to get through, and then the CIP, get into the CIP, which was supposed to be last Thursday, didn't happen, so that'll extend. I don't know if we, did we draw straws, or does it, is it labeled on the agenda for the other two?
It says city manager make the call, that's what it says on the papers.
I don't know whether the library or the fire department wants to go after that, but one or the other will have the, will have that privilege. And I think Don's going to time each of us. I get an hour and 10 minutes.
I left your timer at the plan.
You left your timer at the plan, so I guess.
He's got a bullet up here, don't worry about it, worry about it.
All right, so, Eric, if you want to go.
Yeah, I'm going to switch over Stephanie to the overhead.
I kind of wanted to do a review of where we stand comparison-wise with other communities, and this is looking at communities over population 20,000. This was handed to you a couple of weeks ago, so you should, if you are keeping all your papers together, you should have that from the first set of papers that you got. And I highlighted some columns to give some comparisons. This is the levies from last year. If you look down along the bottom there, it shows the average of the 22 cities of population over 20,000. The second highlighted number in that bottom row is at 1489 is the average tax levy for the, for communities of that size. I didn't have this done for communities that are just in that 20,000 to 30,000 range. We, I think, I might have given you that sheet, it's not in your packet, but the average levy there is more in the 1580 range, because the communities that are that 20,000 to 30,000, you'll, just really unique issues that we, that we deal with, just based off of a lot of the things that were required to do, and then not, that smaller communities do not have to do, but not having as large a tax or population base to spread those costs over that the larger communities have. I just think that, that's part of what drive, that's one of the factors that drives the uniqueness of that 20,000 to 30,000 population community. But I highlighted our tax levy, the 1634, over the, for the current year, in comparison to the 1489 at the bottom. The first column that I have highlighted numbers in, our number there shows, that's the taxable valuation per capita, the property value that backs each person in a given town. Now, property, property valuation, for, when you think about property tax collections as our primary revenue source, property valuation really is a determinant of how easy or difficult it is to fund operations in a community. The average community in the state has 43,000 of taxable valuation per person to fund operations off of. Fort Dodge, Otomoa, the two towns that coincidentally have the highest tax levy, have the lowest valuation to spread their operations across. We're the third lowest at 27,000. You can see where West Des Moines is, they have almost 80,000. And it kind of generates, the last column that I have highlighted numbers in, if you were to look at West Des Moines, I didn't highlight it, but its number is $955 of taxes that they collect per person. We are the third lowest of the communities, our number is $450 of tax per person that we collect based off of our existing levy. The average community collects $611 of property taxes per person. That's not how people tend to look at it, they look at what they're paying for a tax levy on the, on their, whatever valuation they have on their property, but what you'll tend to find is larger, or a lot of the communities that have a higher valuation per capita, they have a more expensive houses. Sometimes, you may have a community where a given house is worth there twice what it is here. I mean, it's not like that's happening all over the place, but it can. You'll see variations from one place to another, and some places have more industrial property to spread their tax levies across, too, to help out the residents. But we have a, just a unique set of challenges, and you just, just to keep it in perspective, people do, though, look at what our tax levy is at that 1634, and it's a big determiner of whether we're doing well or not. The debt service levy, that's one of the areas that I look at long-term, is potentially having the ability to bring that down and help to reduce what our overall levy is. See, the average community is at 290, and we're at 380. We had backloaded debt, we don't have any ability to really have flexibility with changing that or reducing that until after fiscal year '23, but we do have some decisions at that point, whether you want to try to bring down that levy or not. I would recommend that you do.
Yes.
As a community, but that's something that's sitting out there several years out in the future. Switch to the next one. Stephanie had provided six sheets. Two were the gross general fund revenues, then the following, the next two will be gross general fund expenditures, and the final two are the net expenditures after grants or whatever funds are raised within the department. And I highlighted some of the columns in here. Gross general fund revenues, the first row that I highlighted was the fire control, going from the current year's budget of 130,000 up to 500, almost 530,000 this next year, and that's the SAFER grant coming in. Ambulance revenue, it's, it is increasing at a fairly rapid pace, and you'll see that reflected in the way the revenues there are jumping. Patrol investigations goes down a tad bit on the police department, from 1.3 million down to 1.2 million. Not, there's, a part of that is really the, what's going on with losing the grant for the two police officer positions. We had some funding, we'll get a partial year's funding out of that next year. The majority of that is transfers out of local office and sales tax that we come into supplement for about a fifth of the patrol division personnel expenditures. Auditorium is a reflection of a change in how we do our books. Last year, we were showing 656,000 revenue, because all of the revenues that went into VenueWorks came into our books. The current year's budget shows 136,000 of revenue, significantly lower, but we're not going to be showing AMF's revenues on our books, so it's just a different way of accounting for information. The next sheet. Okay, the backside. I highlighted two columns, not that they changed that much, but down there in administration, accounting, and accounting transfers. The major pieces that go into the accounting revenue are the base property tax collections, hotel motel tax goes into this fund and then is transferred out to the hotel motel tax The accounting transfers, that's $6 million. We do have some levies that are collected in other accounts for employee benefits. Emergency levy is in a separate fund, we collect them in the other fund, and then we transfer them here to cover our costs in the general fund. Also see transfers from solid waste, all I'm going to say is sewer, but you're going to tell me, how do you, how do you want to call it?
Waste water.
Waste water. So, we do a transfer out of solid waste, wastewater, property maintenance, vehicle maintenance, and, is there one other fund?
Road use.
Road, I don't think road use tax goes there, but there are transfers for covering, we transfer over 10 percent of revenues that are collected in those other funds to cover overhead, what it takes to run the accounting systems, what it takes to run HR services in the, in the general fund. And at the bottom, our total general fund revenue, I didn't highlight it, but it's the 20,350,000, includes all, about 6 million of transfers, and I can't remember how it shows up. If you, one of the ways that you see the revenues in the general fund, even on Open Gov, shows the revenue significantly lower, but it doesn't take into account those transfers. So, make, as people look at that, they have to be cognizant if they are looking at it inclusive of transfers or not. But the net revenue after expenditures in the general fund is right at 50,000. And if you look at what we're trying to do for our fund balance goal target at the bottom, it goes up to 2,930,000, last year was 2,890,000, or the current year. It goes up each year, 40,000 or 50,000, depending on what our expenses are, so that we do need to have that general fund grow a tad each year, just to maintain the 15 percent cash balance. Next sheet. So, this sheet and the one after it are the total general fund expenditures by department. You see here, the first one is in the fire department. Column that I had highlighted at the top, fire control is where the six officers or firefighters came on for, through the SAFER grant. So, the expenditures for the proposed budget are significantly higher for that column than the current year. And if you go down to, into Culture and Rec and the auditorium, again, we're not counting all of VenueWorks expenditures in this year's, in our, in our books as we move forward into the new year, and AMF doesn't require that, VenueWorks did. So, the current year's budget with VenueWorks in mind was up at 920,000. Next year, with AMF and the relationship we have there, gross expenditures are listed at 423,000. And I guess I did, I didn't highlight the, never mind. I did highlight on the next page, under human services, because I don't know that we have anywhere that we actually talk about Human Rights Commission or Pottersfield, but these are, have been fairly static. In fact, these are the same numbers, I think, for both of them, that they were back in fiscal '13 with the first budget that, that I worked on here. And most of the, most of the other departments will get covered through departmental presentations. But our gross expenditures there, you'll see for the current, the FY19 at the bottom of that sheet, 20,303,000, about 150,000 more than the current year's. The budget percentage increase is only 0.75 percent, but, you know, it's, again, when we took out the auditorium expenditure significantly reduced, and that kind of makes the percentage increase look a lot smaller than it really, it's an artificial shrinkage of the percentage increase in the budget.
How do you think that real percentage is?
If you added that in, another 400,000, that might be 2.7 to 3 percent, somewhere in that neighborhood. And then, if you think about where that is, it's, I mean, the primary drivers are personnel, but the biggest increase, we had $500,000 increase in the fire, fire budget for adding on the personnel there. Net expenditures, fire department is one we've mentioned. You can see how we had the revenues were significantly higher, expenditures were significantly higher, but there in fire control, where, where those funds go through, net of grant funds and fees collected, the fire controls, net cost goes up about 100,000. It's not anywhere near the 500 or 1,000 or so that was, was shown on the other page, because it's offset by grant revenue. And the ambulance, you see there, by budget, is shrinking from 124,000 net cost of operations down to 11,000. And this, again, kind of signifies, we are, we're collecting a lot more in ambulance fees, but we're running an awful lot more calls, and the idea that we should have 12 people within the fire department allocated to the ambulance, main needs discussion as we move forward for how we're allocating people between that and, between fire control and ambulance. It really, we are devoting, I think, more than the 12 to truly run the ambulance service. I don't think it's the 18, but somewhere in there, I think, is worthwhile negotiations. And it's, the reason that is significant is that net cost for the ambulance is something that we cost-share with the CTAA, the city, towns, cities and townships that we have to provide service for.
Okay.
And then I did highlight the percentage there. Total fire department out of the, in the fiscal year 2019 budget, 24 percent, 24 percent of the net cost of the general fund, what's supported by your base property taxes goes to cover fire department operations. Similarly, if you look down below the police department, a little over 39 percent of your property tax dollar goes to cover police department operations. And it's just to give you a little bit of perspective of what services of property tax dollars goes to cover what. Again, the auditorium, even though the numbers wildly changed from what, from fiscal year 18 and 19, both on the revenue and expenditure side, if you look at the net cost for the auditorium, it stays fairly consistent on a budgeted basis. So, and I guess even on that sheet, Eric might have flipped it over the other one, but 3 percent of our property tax dollars goes to cover the development department, which is under Eric. Culture and Rec, which includes most of the youth programming, inclusive of the library, 17 percent of the budget of the net cost of operations, or what your property tax dollars goes to, to do is to cover those things. And on the backside, you see we, a little bit of the public works budget is covered by property tax dollars, and then 10 percent of property tax dollars goes into base administrative Does that kind of make sense? So, that was what you'd had in there from the first meeting that we didn't get to. The next, the next sheet, the gross general fund revenues, I think that Stephanie kind of addressed this the last time, but what you see there is the five-year, this is for a five-year budget cycle, the current year, and then the following four years, if we were to continue operations. We have sheets that, that look at projections for revenues and expenditures for all departments within the general fund, to see what, what to expect based off of employee contracts, our health, what we look at for health insurance increases on an annual basis, some CPI level inflationary factors on basic expenditures in the departments, looking at as how we look for grants to go off over a period of time, and if we maintain personnel with the loss of those grants. What you see on this, the second page of that, at the bottom, now, these two sheets are just looking on the revenue side, but they then tag in at the bottom, after totaling the revenues, we take, we subtract out the expenditures for each year. But the current year, I showed you on an earlier sheet, for the current year, the net revenue was about 49,000, that's highlighted there at the bottom, but that goes to a deficit of 140, then 400,000, then 775,000, and 925,000 to cover our existing level of services in the out-years. Those aren't issues for this year's budget, but they are a major issue and concern moving forward. So, keep that in perspective. You can start to try to think about what you want to do to address those now, you don't have to, but you got to know that somebody's going to have to deal with this next year, and it's going to get increasingly more difficult if you don't find a solution. So, that's, that's a fund that I like to give to you, that it's, we're, we're okay for now, but you do need to know, there, some of the decisions that have been made have a back, on the backside, have some, some difficult decisions to, that are the consequence.
So, therefore, if we, if we run into, if we run into a little ditty that we want to dance to this year, it's not going to, it's not going to hurt, it's not going to hurt the process, because we're going to get there anyways.
Whatever your ditty is.
I've got a quarter for the jukebox, but anyways.
All right, now, Stephanie did hand out to you tonight the CIP plan, and it's shown two separate ways. The first is the capital improvement plan for fiscal '19 through '23, a five-year level of expenditures sorted by department. So, for example, the first sheet has the airport on it. Out of, out of the ones on, that the airport is doing, Mary, Mary Bird, I think, is going to be here at the work session, the next work session, the 22nd or 29th?
29th.
29th. And she'll, and go over the, the CIP items that she has when she does her presentation. The one that, where they're asking for funding from us is the one that I have highlighted. They've talked with us about this for the last couple of years. That runway rehabilitation at 9 and 1/2 million, we committed and talked about over the last two cycles, the need to borrow a little over $500,000 to, to meet the local match requirements on that project. And we've worked that into, as we put together a CIP plan and look at what we can afford to borrow on an annual basis, we've worked that into our annual borrowing amount. Along the bottom, the flood protection projects, the next two phases of the flood wall are listed in there, 5.7 million for FY '20, and then 5.2 million. listed in there, 5.7 million for FY '20 and then 5.2 million for '22. These are ones that I do want to just note, depend, I'm waiting to see what happens with sales tax collections over the next few quarters. We didn't, we had no increment this last quarter and as long as that cycle continues that way, we will delay moving forward on the next phase because I want to make sure that we have funding coming through. One of the large drivers on a change in local option sales tax collections has really been the loss of the fertile, the change of the fertilizer plant.
Right on.
We'll, natural collections, we would anticipate should, should kick back in to start a gradual increase again, but until I see it, I don't want to have, be committed to having additional expenditures coming through on that.
Okay.
Regardless, we're keeping it in here based off of the, what we had as an identified schedule of those projects going forward. From a budgetary perspective, we'll live with that, but we will delay projects depending on where our collections are.
How far is that down right now?
I think this year, we're supposed to bring in, was it 500,000 this year? I just don't remember if that's right or not, but when, when it's zero for a quarter, because there was no increment, then it's, it's down a decent amount. First three quarters last, of last calendar year, we're down 5 percent year over year. So, and that's probably, I guess that's the best I can do is say it was down 5 percent. And we'd seen the year, the year and two, the couple of years before that, an increase of about 5 percent total, which is well above trend. Our, our trend is about a 1.7 percent annual increase, but this isn't the first time we've had a decline occur. We've, we've seen declines of the, of this 5 percent level before, back in 2012 is that we had that happen last. But then we saw other, not just, not just with the fertilizer plant, but we've had other periods where we've had significant increases too, so.
Okay.
You know, each department head will cover stuff that's in their area. Eric, when he gets to the development department, will cover some of these projects, but things that are significant to note, we had the two different brownfields projects, the assessment and then an area-wide planning grant. Those are fully EPA financed projects that have been underway for a year anyway. But then the, he'll have a new initiative that he'll go over with his budget presentation at Healthy Neighborhoods program, which is something new that we haven't seen before. Within the fire department, I highlighted two items. The pumper tanker is one that we'll be borrowing 625,000, that's a bonded item. And I wanted to just point out that we've, we see that and know that in FY '20 that we'll be borrowing for that. The ambulance in FY '19, your, last year's CIP would have had that ambulance, I think, in FY '20, and we've moved that up a year. We just have a need to get that replaced. We, some of the older ambulances, we've had some issues with, and I assume that Chief will talk about that when we get to it. Okay.
Okay.
The equipment for Flint Hills is listed. We transfer over for IT in the general fund, 140,000 a year out of local option sales tax to cover whatever happens to, need to be done at the, at the time. Last year was a new phone system was the primary driver of expenditures. The current year is a new accounting system. And I think we've actually, because of what the expenditures that we've had to do in those, the last couple of years, we've probably fallen a little behind on our computer replacements, which we'll need to get caught up a little bit on this next year. But that's been a pretty good level to make sure that we keep up with our IT needs across the city. Eric has a pretty significant playground improvement project. I don't know if you'll, how, how much detail you go into on that, but that's, that's less than what he would like to do. They would like to have done a super, like a quarter, three quarters of a million dollars is what they would have liked to have done for a project size. They've scaled back their desires based off of, well, whatever forces. The ability to gain funds, I think, is the primary one. And I didn't highlight it, but the, the tennis court resurfacings are something that we hadn't had in here, and I think you'll probably go over what the arrangement is with the school for trying to get those upgraded a little bit quicker than what we would have otherwise done.
And remind, isn't there some, is some dollars available to the US Tenant Association with the resurfacing? So, what we spend here, we'll get a portion of that back.
Yeah, I think he has 10,000 identified and if you look at the cost breakdown on there, and that's something that you can see with all of these, that has a...
But what else money's coming from?
Yep, so that shows a grant, and I, I put the state, but I, I don't know that we really had the designation of where that, whether it was state or federal. The school is the outside entity that's, that's listed there and then starker funds for the remainder of that pro, those, those two projects. But each of the projects that's listed on these sheets identifies the, that's, I guess, a good point to make. It identifies not just what department these are in, but the fiscal year. It identifies the funding source for every item that's on here. And then for staff, more so than for US council, there is a, like the dank work playground improvements there, there's a number right next to it, the 7213-735. For us, that's the accounting code where that will get expensed to. The 7,000 series are all capital projects. And the next page, Eric has three different trails that are going on. One is a safe routes to schools project along Mason Road and West Avenue Trail Connection. Both of those are this next fiscal year. And it seems like we can never get enough of the Flint River Trail. Someday that will be completed.
Someday.
And he has a next phase going on in fiscal year '21. Down at the bottom in the public works, I highlighted the bus replacement. It's not like it's a significant thing. Well, I think they're pretty happy to, I hope they're pretty happy to finally, that we're finally getting some that are getting replaced. But if you, we're expensing buses now as a capital project and funding them out of local option sales tax. We were budgeting them in previous years in the, in the general fund, showing the revenues from grants coming in and we since moved this out to a capital project. And I just, I don't know why I wanted to note that, it's just a different way of accounting for things and it's something that the accounting department has wanted to try to push more and more of our purchases out to capital projects. The area that violates that the most is the police department above. Those are, the numbers there are 1,200, that means it's the general fund. We buy all of the equipment out of it and expense it in the general fund and do one transfer from local option sales tax to the general fund to cover that. The next page, the depot, we had made a decision to use some economic development funds or sub-fund within local option sales tax to, to cover some improvements, the white boxing at, for what would be Greer Steiner, the former Greer Steiner and potentially the future Greer Steiner.
Nice one, Jim.
That has also, that project is larger than what was originally budgeted to reflect the receipt of the Main Street Challenge Grant and the amount of 75,000 to help to increase the cost. We've already done a little bit of the costs that are associated with this project in the current budget year, and that 70,000 is about the remainder of the funds that we had from our original commitment of, I think that was up to 120,000 to spend towards the I imagine that Nick, on the night that he delivers, will, his budget presentation will talk about the public buildings, or the public works building roof. We didn't have that previously budgeted, but it needs to be redone and has some significant issues out, down there.
How old is that, how old is that roof for the public?
It's the original roof when that was, from when that was constructed, and he can kind of talk about the details of what, I think that's about life cycle anyway, but there's...
It's 16 years old, the warranty on the roof is 10.
We do have a parking lot downtown identified as a potential project. That may or may not happen. We'll see over the next few months whether that's something that does need to occur or not, but we, we've identi, identified it as a project and have allocated funds. One thing I'll note, it shows the source of funding being capital project fund. That would, my anticipation is, is that we would be using the payment, the second half payment from the Manor project and then use, have that as cash on hand that would cover a capital project. So, being that it's cash on hand, that becomes then a source of paying for the project. There's a couple of other projects that are listed as a capital project as well. Central Avenue Bridge improvements at 350,000, we had a, an evaluation done of several different things that needed done there, both on an immediate basis and then on a medium-term basis. And this will ta, address all of those issues. This is, we're looking to do a geo-bond or geo-bond paid for with TIF funds. So, TIF funding to cover this project. We haven't identified that on the TIF, shoot, on our TIF urban renewal plan. So, we'll have to modify or amend our urban renewal plan to add that as a potential project. At the same time that we do that, the project right below that, Nick is looking to do some signalization improvements, adaptive signals out along Roosevelt Avenue. Our match on that project, we're looking to use TIF funds for as well.
How much of that is?
If you look there, that...
246,000 is our share.
Yeah, and that's one that he doesn't have a guarantee on a grant. So, as we go to, to do an amendment on the TIF, to, to the urban renewal plan to look at new TIF projects, we'll probably, my recommendation was, was to identify that as a million dollar potential expenditure with TIF funds, and we theoretically could cover it, and I think it would be well worth it, but I'd rather have state funds if we can get it to do this project. And if we have the, you know, if we were to go and make a request for funds and didn't get it and look to have it, have the ability to get it in a few further year, I'd, I'd look to delay the project. But if we didn't look good to get the funds, I'd be recommending that we did it with the full, full TIF funds to make it happen.
Work you managing.
Into the Recplex area, one that I identified is additional parking out at the Recplex. It's a placeholder for 550,000, and again, that's capital project fund, meaning that we would use funds on hand to cover it. We don't have any idea where the, the indoor Recplex committee has, has a potential for, then they, they expressed it to us. That, we're not really sure if that's where, where everything's going to land and how it's all going to work out. But that's a way that we can make that happen if that is the ultimate end and it's a desire for the council to see it. That being said, I know that there will be a lot of discussion between now and the time that anything is actually agreed upon.
Yes, sir.
But if we're going to have the ability to at least have that discussion, we need to identify that project and set aside the funds to be able to use to it. That all being said, what I had looked at originally with that money coming in, that 1.2 million, was to have that go towards the Mount Pleasant Street Bridge to reduce the amount of the TIF borrowing. If we don't use it, and I'm not looking to do that now.
Right on.
It's still, we, that 1.2 million, if we decide ultimately that you don't want it to go into that project, it can still be used towards another TIF project, a potential TIF project. So, like the adaptive signalization, we could use that funding to cover our match on that instead of using it bonding through TIF funds to do it. I think it makes an awful lot of sense, what, whatever that money is used for should be on a, on a project. And should, to me, it makes sense that it would be a TIF eligible project. Parking is a TIF eligible project, it's not a preferred one. All of the others that are on here are what I would consider more preferred TIF projects. And at the same time, I would have people who would, from the chamber, who may have a little bit different perspective on what a TIF project should be than what I do. I've come to learn that. The bottom half of this sheet, within the street sewer department, you know, we show the Maslal work going on here. The current project that we have, that's pretty close to ready to bid at the 5.3 million and then out years at 3.5 million. We are, we have this as much as a placeholder as we do as what a definite schedule is. We don't have a definite schedule on the Maslal, and again, we're, we're going to need an awful lot of work to go into trying to get an adjustment to what our sched, work schedule is on that. But we do need to identify that we, that we have significant capital needs within the system, both the Maslal, the plan itself, as we get to deal with nitrate phosphate removal, whatever, and we've got a, this Mississippi River Interceptor is another project that falls in this area that we don't have listed as a specific project. We have a, a backlog of work that needs done. And we are going to be spending that, to that kind of magnitude of money, whether it's on the Maslal project or on other work within the system. And I'd say that that's something that we need to look at going on into the foreseeable I highlighted this, the base street resurfacing program, 1.4 to 1.6 million per year. That's all geo-bonded projects. That's, that's the core of what we bar, are borrowing money and paying for out of property taxes is our street resurfacing program.
The streets, eh?
Agency Street Rise is an underway project. This, that's the GE side that we had some grant funding to go to, and I'm listing that with 500,000. We didn't know exact, exactly what was going to fall over into the next year, but we do want to recognize that a portion of that project that's underway can fall into the subsequent year. And since we've already borrowed all the money on that project, our match on it, so it's shown there, the capital project fund, the existing balance there is what covers that project. Mount Pleasant Street HMA resurfacing is one that we technically could have done this last year and didn't, didn't get to, and so hopeful we'll see that get out fairly early in this next, next year, this, this next construction season. We already have our match on that borrowed, so that's again, why you see a capital project fund, a mount listed with it. Mount Pleasant Street Bridge is a, about a 5.3 million dollar project. We do have some Department of Transportation money, about a million towards the bridge replacement to go into that, and the rest is a TIF project. And then we've already borrowed funds for the Agency Street East of Highway 61, a 2.1 million dollar project will do signalization improvements at the Hy-Vee, where the Hy-Vee lights are going into, well, Columbia Drive and, and Hy-Vee, Columbus, I'm so good at names.
Columbus, yeah.
But the rest of that is a, primarily a widening of the street and complete, pretty much a complete replacement, isn't it? And then we have seal coats. We're, we'll have one year off, we just don't have the funding to, to do the fifth year. When you, when we presented this last year, we didn't have this extensive a seal coat program on, they have actually extended from what they had... They have actually extended from what they had budgeted for last year. They would have liked to have done every year, but we just didn't have the funds to make it work every year. Broadway Street Extension, that is a, the extension of the road out by the Recplex through the Industrial Park to help tie that off and help for future development of that, their last piece in there. We're looking at that as one that we can get some state funds to help pay for and our match on that covering out a rise. And a couple of other projects that Nick will go over. He'll be talking about the Washington, Washington Street Improvements. That's one that we have funds through the COG, STP funds or whatever it's called now.
Changed the acronym.
STPG or, I don't know. Yeah, they've changed the acronym, I don't keep up with them. But that's an FY twenty-one project and I'd look at that as being something that it would be ver-, it's in the TIF district and our match on that would make sense to use TIF for, as our source of funding on. And, you know, we've also talked about the idea, are there other locations where we can make some improvements that use roundabouts? And there are one or two that they've looked at. What you see in here is that Division in West Burlington, the intersection there where that four-way stop is, the idea of putting in a, a roundabout at that location in one of the out years. Don will have fun with his projects. Most of them are, we're funding out of the oper- essentially out of the operating budget. The ones that are larger dollar amounts are the, the air scrubber. And then in an out year, the gas boilers, and I'm moving ahead of you. Eric. The gas boilers were at the three hundred and five thousand there. And I'll leave it to him to address where those fit in, in an hour and ten minutes. Less, an hour and nine minutes and forty seconds. That's a full CIP plan, but you have them listed a separate way. The, the next set, I just really wanted to show you that it breaks out the funding source of how we're, how projects are covered. Capital Project Fund essentially are, are projects where we're using on, on-hand cash to make a match. The projects that we're looking to use geo bonds of one sort or another are listed for the five years.
Nice.
Projects that we're looking to use TIF funding to cover are listed. And when it comes to both the geo bonds and the TIF, you know, that's one that we've worked fairly significantly with Travis from Piper Jaffray to make sure that we're doing this in a way that we don't get overextended, that they fit within a bond ladder and our existing levies, that we can cover everything.
So, do these pay for themselves within that year or are these things, I mean, how long are we, are we talking?
No, so if you think about, like even TIF, we bring in about two and a half million of revenue into the TIF fund in a given year.
Okay.
So, if you look at the projects, this first, the Mount Pleasant Street is an example, is something that uses almost two years' worth of-
Right.
-TIF increment to cover.
So, over the next four years, we're talking six and a half, give or take?
That, yeah, we're, we haven't identified as much TIF projects as what we'll have TIF revenue in the five years. We could, we could layer in more projects into the, into the out years. We don't need to, but we have the potential to. And, and that, and really that, we kind of went over that last year to, just to show some what ifs of things that we could cover. We, we looked at being able to put two million dollars into a downtown streetscape. Put three million dollars in the Industrial Park into some ex- street expansions out there. Put four million into flood wall improvements beyond what we have the financing to do from another source. And I, I think I had a list of sixteen million dollars worth of projects that we could do over the course of eight to ten years and, and finance. I mean, we have the ability to finance and make it work. It doesn't mean that we have to do it. It means that we do have some flexibility to talk about TIF for financing some different things over the next few years.
Is that, so when we TIF for infrastructure projects, that, that increment can go to the infrastructure projects? Can it also go into the housing that it's pulled from or how's that work?
So-
What are the other options with those, those monies?
Housing TIFs are different. Housing TIFs, like the one you're doing for-
No, 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 I'm talking about if, if we TIF an area, so we've-
Like Dan Cahill's, that's a separate area specifically to cover projects within that specified area. So, it'll cover infrastructure within that subdivision area.
Yeah, I, I understand how that-
But the rest of them, the larger, the larger scope of the, the TIF areas that we have that cover the downtown area and out along Roosevelt and west through the Industrial Park, those are, have, are much more longer term and broader terms. Most of them are, were founded on the basis of a blight. Some of them were, some of the area out along Roosevelt was economic development and have a whole lot larger spectrum of things that you have the option to consider doing with it. None of them are specifically for housing. Not that you can't take an area out there and do a housing-related project. But if we did that, I think that we'd probably want to amend the way we have our plans set up because housing is a completely different animal when it comes to TIF.
Does any amount of that increment go to LMI?
No, that's specifically for housing.
Just for the housing, alright.
Yes. Yep. So, and as you go through these, there's a, you can see what we fund for out of hotel motel tax and sales tax as well. And that's then the back sheets of what we have in here. I'm going to go back, Eric, if you want to go back to Sales Tax Fund. It has a cover page that you're all welcome to read. One thing I would point out from that cover page, the current sales tax, local option sales tax has an expiration date in December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. If you think about that and then you look at the next sheet, the uses of the Sales Tax Fund, if we have four point two million that comes into local option sales tax, our budgeted amount, I've highlighted some of the core areas that we're using funds towards. Property tax relief is two million. We're sending an extra three hundred thousand above and beyond that. We told, we, we were required to put two, fifty percent towards property tax relief. We put a little bit more than that. Essentially, that just is going over to the general fund to support basic operations. The police officers and police vehicles at, right at a million dollars for that purpose. If, if the local option sales tax were to go away at the end of twenty twenty-two, if it isn't renewed, that is three point three million dollars of lost funding, lost funding to the general fund.
Nice one.
By itself, that would have to either, I mean, theoretically, I think you could have, you could raise your property tax levy enough to cover that. I don't want to think what that property tax rate is because it would be high. But there'd be a significant hole in the general fund at the end of that time. And that's something that looms out there for, for us to just be cognizant of. That's another one of those risks that's out there in the out years as to how you maintain existing operations depending on what happens.
Geez, man.
But it, you can also see the list of the projects and equipment that are going to be, that are proposed to be funded with local option sales tax in the two thousand nineteen. This lists every use of local option sales tax for this next year that's proposed. And if you go to the final area within there, you have the hotel motel tax revenue. The backside.
The backside of that.
Breaks out how we use the funding. And it, we break it out, the, each column is a different category. For convention and tourism, out of the seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand or seven eighty that we're bringing in this next year, two hundred and forty-four thousand would go to cover tourism, which is, goes to the chamber. We set aside for a portion for the Memorial Auditorium, a portion for riverfront improvements. When you look at what that is, that covers our costs. We put that into the riverfront expenditure category where we put our time and energy into, whether it's mowing, putting the docks in, a general upkeep and maintenance down along the riverfront area. And it covers our, our costs of, of doing business in that area. Park and rec has a, a few projects listed with it. Arts and culture, we set aside a, and have historically set aside a portion for arts and culture over the years. And you see the, the three projects that we've done, that we did in the current year and are proposed to do next year, the Art Guild, Southeast Highway Symphony, Burlington Municipal Band. When it comes to those, the request was to ha- to see the Art Guild come and make a presentation as well as the Capital Theater, which isn't listed here. Didn't allocate, I didn't allocate anything to it, just based off of a lack of ability to find a funding source to cover it. But we'll have representatives from both of those entities at the January twenty-nine meeting to give an overview of what they do with, in the case of the Art Center, what they do with that funding, how it helps their operations, and in the case of the Capitol, what they're looking to do with that funding. Special projects, I highlighted in there the hundred and eighty thousand, a hundred and ten thousand. This covers a Recplex and recreational activities in the general fund. It helps to support our recreation programs, swimming pool, et cetera, the parks in general. So, it, that helps to cover a big chunk of our parks cost. And Community Field, we allocate funds to as well. When it comes to special projects that are in here, the three, I think that there are three that are funded in here. The west parking lot, Recplex parking lot, there's some park equipment and what's the other one?
Chairs.
Trail maintenance, those are the three things that, that Eric can cover what he's doing with those funds, thanks. We have used the Bridge Run match. How does that work? When, when we do the Bridge Run, people can i- identify a, a charity that they, they want that funding to go to?
Yeah, I'm going to go over some changes we're looking at with that.
Okay, so you'll cover how you're, how that gets used?
Yeah.
And then we set aside for the renewal, Renewable Energy Committee, five thousand a year. Now, with that, with what we set aside for the Renewable Energy Committee, that's now going to a separate side fund. And they, they, as a group, can make recommendations of how they'd like to see the funding used. And for example, the charging stations have been the big thing that you've done recently out of that, that funding source.
Just for the record, that's the best five thousand dollars Burlington spends each year, so.
You happen to be a representative on that group.
That's not important, Jim. He doesn't get it.
Something that I didn't cover out of the local option sales tax, I hate to say, to say that, that I've covered over something. Economic development, we don't have anyone who specifically talks about economic development. This Sales Tax Fund used to, before two thousand thirteen, we were setting aside five percent of funds towards, towards economic development, which would be in the neighborhood of two hundred to two hundred and ten, two twenty. Two hundred and ten thousand, somewhere in that neighborhood. We're looking at, we have a proposal here for it to be seventy thousand for next year. The last, the last project that we've committed funds towards that has come out of that last year, something that Annie brought up as that would be a potential source to do the depot room improvements. That certainly is up to discussion if you want to do something different with how we do economic development too. Something that I brought up with that group in the past, it doesn't meet very often, the potential to look at putting money into facilities, building rehabs as something that has a significant impact on economic development. That's not necessarily jobs. And I think that that's one of those fundamental things is what is the right use? They don't want to see it that, the chamber wants to have that as a pot. And I, and I think it makes an awful lot of sense that if you're going after a, a new industry, do you have the funds set aside that you can, if you need something as a teaser to get someone to come to town, do you have some funds available that you can make, make that happen? And they don't want to lose that. So, as you start thinking about, could you potentially use that money somewhere else? Realize it and recognize that there is a reason why that funding source is there and why we've allocated and allowed some funds to try to build up there. And I only had to make sure that I said that because I know it's been asked of me. So. I can be done unless you have a question on me. Most of the CIP, the specific items, the majority of them are covered by the individual departments.
You guys good?
Yeah, I think the best time to ask more questions would be with those individuals.
And then I can stay underneath the time that the police chief used and, and the competition for Don to see if-
Well, alright.
Who wants to go next?
Want to step out?
Any cold water?
Really?
Yeah, seriously. Oh, that was good. Oh, that was good.
No, I'm good, thanks.
That was good. Thanks, MBT. I gotta get to a chiropractor.
Man, you're looking pretty good day, chief.
Yeah. It's what I brought.
Ooh. Man, you're cool. Come on, man. Alright. Is that pretty lightweight?
This?
Yeah, I got one, this is super heavy. Yeah, but those are nice to have though. Let's, uh, he, he'll be coming right back in, we'll, we can go ahead and get this party started, brother.
Sure?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Okay. Well, I know Jim's not going to miss anything, but. Alright, so I'm going to try something new tonight with my presentation. I've changed my notes so many times, I started doing electronically here, so.
Changed my notes?
The slides are the same, but my, I'm going to try to get my notes off of this iPad here, so. Like usual, I'm going to try to give you more of an upper level budget presentation, but if at any time you want to ask me about any certain line item or something, dig a little deeper into a certain budget, go, go ahead and ask me when I'm at that point, so. As I've said before, we, we kind of think of trying to meet the city's motto there of making Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. We try to make it a safe place to live, work, and play, so that's kind of what we're aiming for.
Yes, sir.
We, when we look at our budget, the, the money that's given to us, we scrutinize it as what are we doing that's best for the citizen? Are we doing the best that we can for the citizen with the money that we're given or with our operations? And something recently that we started doing that really I think shows that is staffing this third ambulance out of West Burlington. If you probably ask the guy honestly, hey, do you really like going out in the ambulance to West Burlington and spending all that time out there, they're going to say, not really, you know, it's, you know, there, it's not like being in one of your own stations.
Right on.
But they know, and we've talked about, it's really what's best for the community, so. So, they're doing it, we're making the most of it, and it is making a difference in the community. So, again, we try to maximize every dollar. If you've been here for a while, you know, we, we do get a lot of grants, a lot of federal grants we've been very successful with for staffing, for a lot of equipment, community, a lot of businesses have given us grants and partnered with us for different things, so. With that said, I'll just move on. So, when you're looking at the- With that said, I'll just move on. So when you're looking at the budget, really, this, this is, as Jim said, this is what we're paying for. We're paying for this staffing. Boy, it really is fuzzy. It's forty-nine total people, forty-eight firefighters, and then our billing manager are included in there. There's a vacancy there at the battalion chief position. We're doing promotional testing next week, and then every, that guy that's kind of off to the bottom there by himself will move up into the rank and will be evened out there at shifts of fifteen in the administrative staff. Just to go over real quick, real quickly, how we staff. So we staff three stations, two of ours, one of West Burlington's. Every station has an ambulance crew. Each ambulance crew is made up of at least an EMT and a paramedic. We prefer to have paramedic, paramedic, and I'm sure they, they like that as well.
Chief?
Oh, yep.
Can you just explain just briefly the difference between EMT and a paramedic?
Okay, an EMT, it used to be called EMT basic, and that's a really good description, right? Emergency Medical Technician Basic, they're a basic level care provider. Our paramedics are the advanced, can provide advanced life support, they're doing the cardiac monitoring and that sort of thing. Our engines are staffed with a, an officer of tou- some type, and then a driver, and then if we have enough people, we'll have a, what we call a pipeman or a, somebody that rides backwards that helps fight fire, so. At a minimum, there's two people on an engine at Central Station and at, at Summer Street. And real quickly, I want to just mention when we hire somebody, I think it's important to realize, we, we have EMT as the minimum to take our tests and to hire, but we prefer paramedics, and at some point, well, within three years, you have to become a paramedic. That's really the way our service is going. And to get that paramedic, it, it is so tough. It's not like when I was, twenty years ago, going through paramedic class, you could go a couple nights a week, get your paramedic. It, it's not like that. It's full-time at college, there's pre-requisite, and then it's a whole year, fall, spring, and then into the summer. It's thirty-eight credit hours of college, then you have your national testing. And it's, it's a very difficult process to get through, and that's really why, like the last few times we've done recruit testing, we really have a very low turnout for our testing. There's really not, the only other option is to say, we'll take anybody and then we'll do all the training, but that would, would cost a lot to the city. So we're pretty happy with the EMT, and then we do train some people to paramedic, or we, we send them to class. But on the firefighting side, almost everybody is coming from another service, either volunteer service or a paid fire department, and they're, they're already certified at firefighting. The last two guys, I believe they're both firefighter twos, so our actual firefighter training is a lot more limited for those two, so they're, they started this Monday, they're on a forty-hour work week. They'll start next week on their regular shift, and about two shifts in, they're counted as staffing, which is great for new hires. I know a lot of places, you can't start counting them, they don't really do anything, you know, for months and months, but we're fortunate with our standards and with who we hire that, that's really not the case. And then also, we, each shift has a battalion chief or a shift commander. And this is really the only time I'm gonna talk about battalion chiefs, so I just wanted to say, you know, I served in this role for about four years, and it's, I don't know how to describe it, it's a special kind of a stressful position. It's different than being an EMT or a paramedic, not saying that their jobs are really tough. But this guy's, each day, he's in charge of, you know, thirteen or fourteen or eleven people, whatever is on his shift, but anytime you see a major incident, that's the guy that's in charge of it. And to get into that position, we require you to have ten years on the job, and then a bunch of other training behind that. But we're talking about guys that have, you know, thousands of calls under their belt, and when they're at a scene, a big fire, they're making a lot of life, life and death decisions with very little information, and it's, it's, well, I sleep well at night knowing who we have in those roles. If we didn't have people that were capable, battalion chiefs, I would have a tough time sleeping at night, but we have some great people, and if you get to meet them. Right now, we have Battalion Chief Bruce Workman, and then we have Eric Bollinger, two very experienced guys. I think Bruce has been a battalion chief since like two thousand and one or two, something like that. He, he is a really good incident commander and a battalion chief. And then they're organized into three shifts of fifteen. Again, I said they got a battalion chief, a captain, a lieutenant, and then twelve firefighters. Again, every firefighter is also, they have some kind of medical certification, at least EMT, most of them are all paramedics. I believe, starting in nineteen ninety-seven, that became a requirement that you had to become a paramedic, so. The people that started before that, there's a few holdouts that are still EMTs, so. Not that they couldn't go through the training, but. Our shifts, again, we work, if you're not familiar with it, twenty-four hour shifts, so you work every third day. Sounds like a great schedule, and it is, and that's what does attract some people to the fire service, but at the end of the year, you're working a hundred and twenty-two days, twenty-four hours a day, that's two thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight hours of work, so. You do get a lot more hours on the job, but working a twenty-four hour schedule, and there is a federal law that dictates how that works and how you compensate people for the extra hours that they work. Uh, what we use is comp days, so. I just figured out there's a maximum vacation that anybody could get on our department is a guy with twenty-five years on the job. He'll get the, his vacation and his comp days, he could get up to six hundred hours off. If he took all of his time off in a year, that's what he would be off. And he would still work two thousand three hundred and twenty-eight hours in a year. And somehow, I don't know how all the comp days got figured, but that includes your holidays, right? So we don't get paid for working Christmas. It's just in your schedule, if it's your third day to work and it's Christmas, you work Christmas. The only time you get anything extra for that is if you come in on a overtime shift, so. That's figured into their time off. The new hires, the ones we just hired, if they took all their time off this year, they're gonna work about twenty-five hundred hours this year, so. Get a lot of, of work out of them with that schedule. All right. Our operations, I'll go through it kind of quick, but everybody knows we do nine-one-one ambulance transport for a large area. We do inter-facility transfers, say, from a nursing home to Great River Medical Center and then through Great River back. We also do Great River or any other hospital to higher care facility, like Iowa City, Genesis in Davenport, a couple hospitals in Illinois. Then the fire, that covers all kinds of things, structure fires, car fires, grass, vehicle, we cover the airport, and then fire prevention. It's something that we would really like to spend more time doing, but it's really hard to do with the, this, how busy we're, we are on a daily basis, but a lot of this falls onto the fire marshal to do. He does all of our building inspections, he does plan reviews, he does most of our fire investigations. The public education falls to all of our personnel, and then pre-planning, again, it falls to the shift personnel. So this is our, the area that we cover, so yes, we're called the Burlington Fire Department, where we answer to the Burlington City Council, but we, our territory is way outside the city limits of Burlington, so. For fire, it's the red area on there, which is about a hundred and sixteen square miles and a population of thirty thousand seven hundred, so about another five thousand or so more than what lives in the city of Burlington, but the territory, Burlington's about thirteen square miles, so you add a lot of square miles on with the quad township. The primary ambulance coverage there, a hundred and ninety-nine square miles, includes all the red and all the blue areas, and the population of about thirty-six thousand five hundred. And that includes any of Illinois on there. We are primary ambulance for the Gulfport City and the Gulfport Township, just immediately across the bridge, and then the rest of Henderson County. We're a mutual aid basis for primary service, or we tier, so. If they have a basic level ambulance and they need advanced level care, we meet up with them somewhere along the road, so. We go over there twenty to thirty times every month. It just depends on the month, but we do spend a lot of time over there. And I will say, we're the, one of the few urban fire departments that covers such a large rural area, generally not the case. And I'll kind of talk about how that works.
I was gonna ask you how you feel about the compensation on that.
I got a slide for that later. Can we talk about that later?
Yes, sir.
It's definitely something to talk about. All right, so I'm just gonna go back real quickly to FY seventeen, that's the last year we have all the figures for. So our budget that year was about four point eight million, we came in just a hair under that, and I'll talk about that a little bit. If you know Jim, Jim's a lot like me, oh, he's sitting right there. He, we, we do our costs high and our revenues low, and so that kind of helps you out at the end of the year, even though we might have had a, a higher overtime year or something, sometimes it will still come in under budget because Jim helps us out there. At least it, it pays out on the net side, so. Costs last year was three point three million for the fire department. Our revenue was one point five. Talk specifically about the revenue here. So ambulance billing in twenty seventeen, one point one million dollars, that is that year billing, so those were trips that we made that year to the hospital that were billed and paid in the same year. The bad debt is almost all ambulance revenue, some of it's for other fees that we have, but most of it's ambulance revenue. But it's debt that goes back up to ten years, so Dana does that, she goes back up to ten years and collects that. We keep thinking that's gonna fall off, and we get, you know, and it is a little bit, but it's really been fairly steady in there. And she's collecting, and that's our bad debt, but she's collecting bad debt for other city departments as well. CTAA, again, that is act, that's an ambulance revenue that the city township, ambulance association. FY seventeen, they paid us forty-eight thousand. The quad township, that's the fire protection that we're talking about, a hundred and thirty-two thousand. That's, it's an eighty percent of their collections, if I remember right. What they collect on the tax, they give us eighty percent of that. So that number fluctuates, what's been going up. Every time they pay us, it's a little bit higher. We started out in twenty twelve, I think it was around a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, so it has gained, but not a whole lot. The hazmat, that's for covering the, the county with our hazmat team, that pays for our training, our equipment, stuff like that. It's a set amount. We actually pay some of that back to the county for Gina Harden. I think, I can't remember what that is, five thousand or so. She bills us twice a year, so it's really more like forty-three, forty-three, five that we, we keep of that money. That's never changed since I've been on the department, that's been the fee that we get for hazmat. There are some hazmat collections, if we go on a car accident, or we go somewhere and there's something that we need to clean up, we charge for that. That's not included in that. That's just a direct payment from the county.
Chief, when you say it's never changed, it's been that way since you've been on the, on the, in the department? How many years you been in the department?
Twenty.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if we got it right when I started. Shortly after I started, we had the hazmat team up and running, and I think it was, but couldn't, it couldn't have been on a per capita, because I don't think we ever had forty-eight thousand people in one county. It was the plan that we were gonna charge a dollar per capita to other counties for coverage. We're gonna try to farm this out, and they mostly all said, well, we'll do it on our own, so. That's, we, that's never went beyond our county. We've been asked to go to a couple other counties. Henry County's asked us, but they currently pay musketeen for that, and it's like fifteen cents per capita. It's like, well, it's not really fair to cover you for that when we're charging our own county a lot more, so we've never, never pursued that. The confined space contracts, that's for local businesses or contractors that do confined space work. When they're going in a hole or any kind of confined space, they call us, put us on notice, and we charge for that. We go out, make sure they know what they're doing, and kind of see what the space looks like, so if there's a problem, we can make a rescue.
Is that for medical mailing?
No, that's, that's for setting up tripods and ropes and harnesses, and there's, we have a lot of equipment for that. Luckily, we don't hardly ever use it. Those are, that's all contracts, so that's an annual basis. Donnie just redid those, our deputy chief for this year, and that amounts up to twenty-three thousand two fifty for the next, for eighteen. So our total revenue in FY seventeen was like in one point one, or one point five million roughly. That, those numbers don't add up to that, because there's a lot of things aren't included in those numbers. Uh, we do EMS billing for Minneapolis, that's about five thousand, a little over five thousand a year. We get nine thousand dollars from the airport for coverage, and then there's the motor vehicle accidents and some fires that we bill for. When Mark does inspections, he, he, it's a, there's a permit fee, right, if you need a permit. He needs to come back, and a lot of times he does, he'll come in and do an inspection, and he'll find some violations. The first time that he comes back is, it's no cost, usually it's within thirty days, or whenever the people want him to come back, he comes back, does a reinspection, everything's fine. We're good, but on the second and following reins, with the re-inspections after the second time, we start, we do charge for that. Hopefully, when he called Mark back for an inspection, everything's ready to go. And then the bottom there, I went, I went back in time to two thousand and seven, and that was our revenue in two thousand and seven, nine hundred and ten thousand, so. We added about six hundred thousand, or about sixty-five percent increase in our revenue in that, in that ten-year time period. Because we raised our rates sixty-five percent. That's really what Jim was talking about, our calls have went up a lot. We have raised our EMS rates. Our collection practices on EMS are way better. Can you thank Dana Hunter for that? She's very, she does a very good job of keeping our guys documenting things right, and then she's very good at, at her job. Also, we've added other calls, and we've added these other territories like the quad township, going over to Illinois, things like that. That's all contributed to that increase. So our overall budget history there. Like you see in FY seventeen, we had a budget of just over four point eight million, and this year, five point five, and that is with, from seventeen to nineteen, that's the addition of six personnel, that's really that huge cost increase with the normal allowances that would be in there. FY eighteen, we were approved to add one firefighter, so that's, accounts for that jump from seventeen to eighteen. So from eighteen to nineteen, I believe that would be the five people in the normal increases that would be in there for personnel. The net cost of our fire department, it's, it's fluctuated some, but it's been in that mid-three million dollar range over the year since about twenty fourteen. We had a safer grant, kind of like the safer grant we're in now, it didn't start right at the fiscal year beginning, so it's kind of hard to explain the years we had a safer grant, but it was a two-year safer grant in that FY twenty-fourteen period that actually paid for three firefighters, and it paid a hundred percent of their cost for two years, a little bit different than the one we're in now. I went and put the FY twenty-two anticipated net on there. Three years out from now, that's when the safer grant pays nothing. That's the first year that there's no, no federal dollars at all, so. That's a four point three million dollars, and again, I'm using Jim's numbers, and, and I'm hoping that ambulance revenue is not what Jim's predicting, because he, if you look, it was more than a hundred thousand dollar increase the last year, we're probably gonna do that again. I think his out years, he's got like really small, like tens and fifteens or something percent, or fifteen thousand dollar increase, not the hundred thousand dollars here. So I, I really feel like when we get out there, if we do nothing else, if we don't change anything, we're, we're gonna beat that number in twenty twenty-two. But I'll show you, I'll show you some things that we can do that I think we should do, that will help lower that even more. Just gonna put all these up here, so. This is our proposed budget for FY nineteen for the ambulance, and I'm gonna hit the, the bigger budgets, ambulance and fire control. Our, our ambulance budget is one point, about one point four million dollars, and that does include just the twelve personnel. And as Jim said, maybe that needs to be adjusted. I, I'll talk about that a little bit later, but I think adding three people in there would be a fair thing if we're gonna take this to CTAA. Twelve that are in there now, and if we put the other six, and we talked about eighteen being in there, they do, they, I mean, they do a lot more than just the ambulance, so. We're getting, you know, each shift is getting six, or right now, they're getting four personnel to fight a fire. If we have a fire, here's four extra people that you wouldn't have had on the, on the fire scene, so it's very important for us to have those people there. The increase, three point nine six percent is, is mostly personnel. There is some training. If you look down through there, I increased the training budget. It's, it's quite a jump from where it was. That's due to, like I said, we didn't have paramedics take our tests, so we had to hire some EMTs, or we're sending to school. We got a couple, we're in school, they're in school now, and then next fall, I have two more that'll be in the paramedic schools. That accounts for the increase. One thing we've been doing, it's not costing us anymore, we're using the same budget we had for EMS, but we're doing a lot more of having outside instructors come to the fire department and do the teaching, and then we try to remote it to the other station, so West Burlington and the Summer Street Station, they, they're watching it on a computer and iPad. Oh, last fall, as much as we can, because we, we really need people to stay in their station. There's some training, like today, they were doing hands-on stuff with the cots. Well, it's kind of hard, you can't do that on a computer, so they did come downtown for that, but otherwise, we try to keep them in their, in their district as much as possible. And having the outside instructors come in, we have to have formal education, so you have to run all this stuff through the college, it's a huge process. It's not like I can say, I'm gonna teach you guys something today, and it's gonna count. No, it doesn't, it doesn't work that way, so there's some front-end stuff.
Teach you guys something today.
I do, I do that sometimes, but not for EMS. So they, the guy, we have one, well, both of them are paramedic instructors. One's a paramedic instructor, now at the college, one from. So they, uh, the guy, we have one, well, both of them are paramedic instructors. One's a paramedic instructor, now at the college, one's a paramedic. Very experienced, great instructors. They teach the same class three times, right? One on each shift. It's very cost-effective. It's better than us. What would happen before is these people wouldn't get their required training, would come January and they have to certify in March. We'd have to send them to Davenport or somewhere else to get their certification hour. So we'd be paying overtime and class costs and stuff like that. So it's, it's been a great thing for us. And also in the training budget, that EMS training budget includes all of our ambulance reports getting CQIs. So quality checked by one of these instructors. So we used to do that ourselves. And last year when I stood here, I was talking about how I was doing the CQIs. And I don't mind doing it, but having a third party is the way that most persons are doing it, having another person look at your reports, not me. I might be a little biased. So I do check some of them, but we check a hundred, a hundred percent of them. And that's for patient care is the main reason that he's checking them. But also for billing purposes and for, to keep us out of legal trouble. So uh, that's included in our training budget. On the wrong slide here. Uh, so our, our revenue is projected to be one point three million for the ambulance. That includes a lot of the stuff that was on the last slide. Um, so our projected net cost, that Jim already talked about, about eleven thousand dollars. So that's twelve, twelve paramedics. Everybody in the ambulance budget is a paramedic. We don't put them in there unless they're a paramedic. Uh, so they're in there, all the training, a lot of station, not a lot of station, but some of the station stuff, supplies are in there. Uh, so there's a lot of costs in there. So what I look at, I say eleven thousand. We're paying eleven thousand dollars to have four people per shift if we have a fire. So we're supplementing our, our fire response with the ambulance budget for eleven thousand dollars, which is a pretty good trade-off. You throw six more firefighters in there, yeah, that eleven thousand's gonna go up to closer to six hundred thousand dollars, right, Jim? I think somewhere in, in that range. So that's why I don't know if the six is the right number. More, I think three. Uh, FY seventeen, uh, our net back in seventeen again was forty-three thousand. So that net, keeping the same number of people in there is going down year after year. Next year, if we keep the same, I think Jim actually has the net going up, but I think the net will, should go down. It should be, it should be pretty much erased.
One of the things that's happened, again, ambulance revenues has increased the last two years more than what I have budgeted. But we, the year before, it actually decreased by a hundred thousand. So it, it's something that is, that can be variable depending on calls, depending on how reimbursements work. And I, yeah, we, we've seen ten percent, close to a ten percent annual increase, but I just take the budget.
Yeah.
Long-term into that, into the future, when you have uncertain, some uncertainties about how the health field's going.
Yeah, I mean, I'm with, I'm with being a conservative, being conservative when it comes to budgeting and uh, but that being said, I think we're gonna be, just based on where we're at this year so far with revenue, with the ambulants and the number of calls, I think we're gonna be ahead of that. Oh, I forgot, there's FY, go back here just to the number of calls. So you can see where we've went over the years. Um, these are just EMS calls. So in twenty-fourteen, we had thirty-four, one hundred and forty-nine calls. It goes up every year. This, uh, twenty-seventeen, we had four thousand one hundred and one calls, four EMS calls, with another eleven hundred that were fire-based calls. I think I'm gonna talk about call volume later, so I won't mention that. But uh, that's where it's headed. And this, this last, I went back and did the first half of seventeen, the second half of seventeen. And we added about twenty-five calls on average per month in the second half of the year. It's, it's going up. We had, our busiest months ever were the end of twenty-seventeen, where we're doing four hundred and seventy-five calls uh in a month.
Do you know how much uh mental health has affected those calls?
Some. Not, not, yeah. I mean, there's. Uh, so fire control is our next, well, it is our biggest, the biggest part of our budget. And there's an increase of, in twenty-nineteen of uh almost sixteen percent. And that is due to the safer personnel. Um, that's the six people that we, we hired with that. Um, our fire control budget in FY eighteen was three point one million. Uh, our revenue's projected to be uh five hundred and eleven thousand, so. I'm not sure if I was gonna say anything else on that budget. Yeah, so all, pretty much all the increase in fire control is due to the personnel. Um, I uh did have to have eight thousand in for healthcare and medical services. By contract, every other year, anybody that's over thirty-six gets a physical on the fire department. So this is the other year coming up in twenty-nineteen. I think it's a great thing, and we try to, to do as much as we can with the money we're given for the physical. So we uh put that out for bid to different agencies. We were able to use a PA here in town that was really good, did a lot of things for the money we gave him. That's, he's, he's no longer in town. So we, we use Great River, but, and they do all our other physicals. So it's nice to have a continuity of care out there, but. And then we moved a little bit of money on our vehicle repairs from outside vendors to inside, our vehicle maintenance out at Public Works. They're doing a lot more work than they used to do on our vehicles, and they do a really good job. And we've been able to get some newer ambulances, that last fire truck, which has helped cut down on our maintenance costs. So our outside costs are not near what they were, which is awesome, considering how high that was at one time. Figured I'd put this on there before somebody else brought it up. So it's a topic that nobody likes to say, oh, we spent, you know, there's a year there, we spent two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars on overtime. And I would say, uh, not only do you not like to see that, I don't like to see it. And my guys don't wanna work it. And truth be told, that year, if we would have filled every overtime check, it would have been double that. People, they don't need to be coming in on their days off to work. They need their days off. So I would rather see that where we're, you know, fifteen thousand. Where we're using it for covering for somebody to go to a class or something like that. But we're using it when people are sick or injured. Uh, we're doing a lot better now with the safer grant, because we've used that to build in, I don't say cushion, but there is. Or be injured now and not hire overtime every single time. Where before, we were at the minimum. And every time somebody was sick or hurt, had a long-term injury, it was, it hurts your budget, because it's twenty-four hours of overtime every time. They're scheduled for twenty-nine hundred hours a year. That's pretty much twenty-nine hundred hours of overtime that you're gonna be paying out. So very expensive when somebody hurt. We're, we're doing a lot better this year, and I, I like that we have that one person cushion in there. Talked about that. And obviously, our, you know, our job is very physically and I would say mentally demanding. And when people go off, um, we can't let them come back until we're, we're a hundred percent uh healthy. So that does affect, we have people come in on light duty and that type of thing. But our injuries generally, you know, if you're hurt, you're hurt. And you, you, there's no coming to work in a while, just drive the truck or I'll just drive the, no, you, you have to be able to do everything that we do. So that, that also affects that. All right, so I'll explain the, the safer grant here really quick. So this safer grant period uh started in October of this last year. It's a three-year grant. The federal government will pay seventy-five percent of the wages and benefits for six firefighters, paramedics. That's the six that'll be those same six people until the end of the safer grant. That's how it works. Uh, so for two years, it's seventy-five percent. The third year, they pay thirty-five percent. Of course, we pay the, the other part. Uh, the most that they're gonna pay, their, the federal share is one million. I don't think we're gonna reach that, because we asked for the grant based on hiring all paramedics. And everybody with a family, everybody with family insurance, and that's, not everybody's a paramedic and not everybody's married. So uh, our costs won't be as high to, to get that one, one million dollars. So I'm just, I wanna review the, the safer grant justifications. These would, not only do we use these to get the safer grant, but these would be what I would say, this is why we need to keep these, the six people that we have. The first one is the National Fire Protection Association Standard, uh, seventeen-ten. And that lays out how many people we should have on a fire scene and how quick we should get there. So on a, on a regular structure fire, like a residential fire, uh, we need to get fifteen people there. We need the first truck to be getting there within four minutes and the remainder to get there in nine minutes. Their gear on. But that's the timeframes that we're working in. That's what we used in the grant uh to get the extra people. Uh, the, the second thing that probably affects us a lot more on a daily basis is having the third ambulance. So we put that in our grant and we've been doing that ever since October. And it's been a great thing for our city. Better coverage of our territory, including Burlington. Not just, I shouldn't have put including Burlington, but, but Burlington. That's really what we're doing. And a lot of people ask me, why do we have an ambulance in West Burlington? I said, West Burlington, why are we, yes, it's a benefit to West Burlington. We had a fire station that was over on that side of town. We would use our own station. We don't have a place to put our ambulance over there. Territory breaks down. But we are providing way better coverage uh for Burlington. Uh, decreased response times, not only because that area on the west side of town's better covered now, but we're not sending the ambulants from downtown to cover it. And then getting a call downtown where Summer Street Station comes and covers it. So it helps out the entire city and actually our whole response. Uh, increased call volume, it doubled in twenty years. I'll just say, in three years from now, I don't know where it's gonna be, but we added almost four hundred calls last year. And I don't know if we're gonna add another four hundred this next year. It's, it's possible. I think at the end of the safer grant, we're gonna be looking at six hundred calls per year, not, not fifty-two hundred that we have now. What'd I say?
Six thousand.
Is that what I said?
You said six hundred.
Oh, yeah, six thousand calls. We'll be looking at six thousand calls.
What do you attribute that to? Is the population's aging or?
Yes, that's exactly.
Silver tsunami.
I knew you would say it. I didn't have to say it. So that is, it's the baby boomer generation, you know? And it's, they're getting older. It's a big group of people that are falling into that bracket. So and the other, the other side of that is uh the economics of our city, the, the poverty rate plays into that. So. Uh, we have a higher than normal, or higher than I think the state average on the poverty rate. And that also contributes to your use of emergency services. There's the calls. Again, they more than doubled in that twenty-year period. Just real quick, I wanna talk about what, what constitutes a call, because I get that, you know, people like, well, I seen you guys out putting uh smoke detectors in, or I seen you out uh talking to the kids at school. You know, you're just trying to run your call numbers up now. Training, smoke detectors, uh, taking phone calls. None of that generates a call for service for us. We actually have to get in a vehicle and go somewhere. Uh, somebody called us for help. That's what our calls for service are. Us, back when I started, we even, we used to divide up. We had EMS calls and we had fire calls. Had a call back and a fire truck came. Well, now that was a fire call and an EMS call. It got counted twice. And I think there are some services that still do that. We counted, it's just one call. If we're on the same scene, it's one call. We could be at a car accident with three ambulances, a fire truck, battalion chief, chief officers. It's just, it's one, it counts as one call. Software used to count, uh, you'd go to a fire and maybe you got there was a big fire and the neighbor's house got burned. Well, you would have to do another report. Well, that would count that as another fire call. Our new reporting, it doesn't count that. We, we had a fire up off Plain Street where it was a house, a garage, a car. All generates other reports, still just one. Been all along, but apparently that wasn't counting it that way.
So are you saying the, the number of increases could possibly be even more? Is that what you're, is that what you're?
Yeah. Well, for nineteen ninety-seven, I actually went back in time and we had the calls.
Did you, did you use a car or?
Took the calls where it said the fire department went out for an EMS assist. They counted those as enough. I took those out. I mean, I, that was, we were already there. We had the ambulance there, so that didn't count. So it wasn't like it was now, but.
So the twenty-five ninety-four is a real number.
Yes, that's a real number. And that might include the exposure fires that, like I was saying, so there, it, that still might be inflated somewhat, but I don't. Report to see how that worked. Um. Another thing on our calls, when we go out, there's always documentation. There's always a report done. And I was really hoping Doug was gonna be here. I forgot he was, because I really wanted to say, you never hear any of our guys say ten, eight, no report. That's not in our vocabulary. So. Doing a report. That's uh police department jargon, but we don't do that. If we go out, there's a, there's a, there's a report done. For medical calls, you're talking thirty to forty minutes to, to get that done. If it's a fire, hours. If not, you're visiting it even the next day sometimes, if you have to do an investigation. So it's not like we pull back in the station. All right. And then the last thing I had on there was the overlapping call. So for twenty-seventeen, forty-seven percent of the time, there's at least two separate calls, not two vehicles, two calls going on somewhere at the same time. So about half the time, if somebody's out, there's somebody else already out. And it's a rarity that any of the calls that we're counting have one person in a vehicle. It's a fire engine. It's multiple people. Uh, I don't know, I didn't look at it for twenty-seventeen, but the year before, we averaged three people per call. So every call averaged three people. And if you, most of your calls are ambulance calls, that's two people. It takes a lot of fire calls to raise that up above the two people. But our average on a fire scene is somewhere around ten. The closest station map that I told you I wanna share with you. So all that area in green, that four point three square miles of, that's Burlington square miles, is actually closer to the West Burlington Fire Station than it is to either one of our other stations. So I found some stuff from Bill L. back in the nineties where he said, we need to do something to cover our western side. Did that way to the west even more since then. So it, it makes sense that we're trying to cover that area. There's places like Lenox Park. We can't drive there in four minutes, so that's impossible to meet seventeen-ten. Coming from uh West Burlington, we can do that. And we don't get a whole lot of calls in, in all those areas. I can tell you some places that are nursing homes or care centers, there are all different types on West Avenue. We're cutting two to three minutes off those response times. Uh, the bakery, Lance Bakery or Shears, I think it's called Shears now. You know, they're used to us taking like seven to nine minutes to get there. Our guys are like, they're calling nine-one-one and we're there. Just like, wow, that was quick. And we do get a lot of EMS calls there. So. And really, it's a good deployment of our resources. We could put the third ambulance downtown. And what we did before was both ambulances were out. You had to shut down an engine, you know, and put, put them on an ambulance downtown and take a third call. So this is a good use of our uh resources, our personnel. So those were the two biggest budgets. But yeah, these are the other areas. Fire administration. Alright, you know, I forgot on the fire control to tell you who all that covers. That's uh all the battalion chiefs, the captains, the lieutenants, and everybody that's not, not the twelve guys that are assigned to the EMS budget. So that's the majority of all personnel. Fire administration, I told them to do that.
You did that, didn't you?
Fire administration is myself, the deputy chief, and Dana Hunter, and then all of our associated costs are in there. That's up about three point seven eight percent, or exactly three point seven eight. Um, that's almost all personnel costs. Uh, there's some training and then uh we had some vehicle repairs. Uh, fire prevention, uh, that's the fire marshal and his budget. It's again, personnel and then a couple, two hundred and fifty dollars for training, uh, addition to what he had. He, his training is not like our training. He's, he can't teach himself or do it online. He's gotta go to a school. Uh, stuff for inspections, code-related uh classes. The hazmat team, that's a very small budget of ours. We reduce some of the training. It looks like a huge decrease, eleven percent, but it's a couple thousand dollars. So. Uh, airport is up five percent. Uh, we added a thousand dollars to the airport, the park station. A lot of people think, oh, that's a brand-new station. It's twenty, it's over twenty years old now. It was opened in nineteen ninety-seven. So it's not as new as a lot of people think. So heating and air conditioning, the generator, the garage doors, every year, more and more things are costing us money out there. So. I still don't have a lot of money in the maintenance budget, but I had, had to add some more in there. Um, the training budget out there. Thousand, we get reimbursed from the airport. We're paying around eight thousand dollars a year to keep guys certified to cover the airport. We used to send people out of town, uh, Cedar Rapids, Dubuque. Can we pay overtime? Have to pay for the class, travel expenses. Very expensive. Well, we decided instead of doing, and we'd only train four per shift. So now we pretty much train everybody to cover the airport by bringing. So now we pretty much train everybody to cover the airport by bringing the instructor here. He brings that big prop in that's down there in the right hand corner. We do, we get some of our night training out of the way as well. We have to do so much night training every year and live fire training that counts for both. We do it two days in a row. One shift has to come in on overtime, but for a four hour class, it's, it's pretty reasonable. So that's been great for our department to do that. And then the disaster control is a reimbursement, I believe it's for a, it's for a siren, I think, the We looked into it several.
It's like the utilities to cover it.
Same amount. So I just put it there because it's one of my line items. And I wanted to make mention of one thing and Jim probably won't like me for bringing it up, but our workers comp budget. Several years, well, when I first became the chief, we didn't have a workers comp budget till maybe the next year or somewhere in there. And I'm not sure how all those costs were calculated. Thousand is charged between all the personnel budgets to workers comp. And if you do any comparisons where you look at other fire departments, you're not going to find a workers comp. At least you're not going to find it that high. Most of them don't have any line item for workers comp. Some have a very low, but like Fort Dodge, the two cities south of us, full-time departments, they don't have a workers comp budget. They've figured out. It's not included in a lot of people's budgets, other fire departments.
So a lot of places will pay for that. They, we have a special revenue to cover our employee benefits. And so a lot of places will collect their employee benefits levy and then they'll pay for the employee benefits out of that line item. They will do it as a lump sum, either like for emergency services, under the emergency services, they'll have a miscellaneous expense line item at the bottom that doesn't go into the police or the fire department, or they will do it down in administrative services where they'll pay for all of the work comp there. Two departments, so that you were, you reflectively see the, the true cost of each department specifically. I think it's a better way to do it. But he's right, not, a lot of communities don't do it.
And that number's dropped, right? I mean, it was over 200,000.
We
In years past, I don't know what the
We To cover work comp costs. And so that will get allocated out based off of the We use a formula that's based off of what, I, I municipal workers comp association for, and they're, they're looking at 411 cities. So the, the rates that they're using. 411 city does work comp, which is different than other towns. But we break out, look at a total of 350,000 that we need since we're self insured. And allocate that into the work comp account. And each department pays their respective prorata share based off of their salary levels. We've been doing that the last few years. The current year we went down to 300,000, but we're, we're having to go back up to 350,000 as it's had, as it had been in the last few years. Chief mentioned previous to him doing budgets. Like a $600,000 deficit in that account. They weren't, they were just charging stuff there and letting it build up without putting any money towards it. So we got, we had to get rid of that deficit and then start allocating funds there. We carry a balance in there. Probably 250 or 300,000. But it went down 70,000 last year. Which is part of why we've increased it and we may end up having to do that in out years further beyond what we've budgeted to do, but.
Explained it way better than I could, that's for sure. So any questions on our, any of those budgets? What do we get for the 3.6 million and the number one thing is we get experienced in dependable quality EMS and fire response. Like I said, last year we had about 5,200 calls and we, I did a printout from our reporting system of how many calls. A lot of our personnel had over 500 calls. They went on over 500 calls last year. So you take that over years and years. Their experience level is, is way up there. So they have a lot of experience. They come in with a lot of qualifications. And when I say they're dependable, for instance, Saturday. If we kept up that pace. Can do the math real quick in my head, but that's, that'd be the, a record month for sure for us. But we covered every one of the 24 calls with our people. We didn't call people from off duty. We didn't call, call other departments to come in. So had good response times when we covered our calls. So.
And chief, do you got anybody down there that's got 30 years of experience?
So Couple, two, if I remember right. That's it. Okay. So again, we already talked about that. We're getting three ambulances. Minimum staffing every day. So response times are definitely improving. You really see it when you look at Burlington and West Burlington and then the out areas as well. Every time we go to a call, I think this is important to note, we have a paramedic and an ambulance. So if we go on a fire call, well, the ambulance crew has to go. Get there, we have the people to take care of it. If we get injured, we have people to take care of it. So it's different than a lot of communities are. And then having that, that number of people allows us to tap into some other revenue streams. So like when we're talking to quad townships, if we were sitting here with six people on duty, I don't know. I'm not sure. Maybe they would. I don't think they would. Airport, the hazmat team would be really difficult to do with that number of people. So All right. So looking ahead to the future, looking to Service, or how are we going to keep staffing at 11 to keep the third ambulance open and keep our response times? And again, we're looking at, I believe we're going to be, we're going to be seeing 6,000 calls a year. So it's going to be even more important. And I put these, this is how I run my own life. But if you like Dave Ramsey, basically you got two choices. There's just with a 92% personnel cost, you can't cut our budget without affecting their response. There's just no way that that's going to work. We scrutinize every dollar that we spend now. I just don't know how you would, you would cut that down. How you can increase revenue. And so here, in my eyes, there are a couple. Is going to go up every year. There's really no reason to think that's going to go down. So the increased calls and then the CTAA contract. I think adding the three people to that is a good a good compromise with how that would work. Money. The second thing, I really can't do this on my own and I'll try to explain it the best I know how. The townships are paying us 80% of what they collect. Well, what they collect is a 60 and three quarter cent tax levy for emergency services. They use that same 60 cents to pay their part of the CTAA. Us for fire protection. And if you ask them, that's all they can tax for fire services. And I believe that's an accurate statement when they say that. So even if we said, we want you to double what you're paying, they're going to say, we can't do it. And I think that's kind of what happened when they went from West Burlington to us. West Burlington said, we're not going to keep doing it for this month. We need That's how it came to Burlington. So I got these fractions, actually Stephanie provided one in her, in a document she provided. So if you have a house in Burlington, it's worth a hundred thousand dollars. You're going to pay $173 per year for fire and EMS protection. Streets, say Kestner or Florence, and you could live in one of those townships, have a house worth a hundred thousand dollars. You're going to pay $33 for the same department. We're going to come in the same vehicles, bring the same number of people, have the same amount of experience. If you have a fire, we're going to hook up to the same fire hydrant. Same side of the street, they're going to pay 30, they're, you know, it's a, about a six times difference. And that $33, that's figured on the, the 100%. So it's actually not even $33. It's less than that. So in order to change that, that's not something I can do. I don't even think it's something that you can, there's no way for you to do it, but there is. To change. That's been there since the early seventies when the, the state outlawed benefited fire districts. So they said, no more separate taxing authorities for fire. You can tax only up to this amount and that's it. And it's never changed off the 60 and three quarter cent. So And so I say that not because I want you to think, let's just quit doing that. I don't want to quit doing that because we're all trying to cooperate and provide the best service to the community. And what used to happen is we'd be sitting in Summer Street Station, there'd be a fire south of town. You could see the smoke, you might see the fire. We just sat there. You know, that's not how it should be. We should all be working together. And I'm not saying they should be paying $173. If you live seven miles outside of town, you're not going to get the same service as somebody that lives a block from the fire station. You're going to get the same equipment, but on the same token, it, it costs a lot more to go out to your house. So it's very, very labor intensive to fight a fire out in the county, but truth be known, those fires way out in the county, they, they get such a head start on you. If you're, you're not getting there for 10 or 15 minutes. You're generally fighting a much bigger fire than you are in town. So what we save could maybe be different. I don't know of any other.
City just bound by the, with the burden of carrying those costs until the state changes their.
If we want, if we want to collect that 120 or 132,000 dollars.
There's only, there's only so much we can ask for from the CTAA, just based on the nature of how they can collect revenues. Townships are very limited. Of direct billing sent to the homeowner or anything like that.
No, there, there are certain. There are certain types of calls, you know, illegal burns out in the county. If they, we will send a bill for some of those. We have a provision for brush fires. We really haven't used it. A lot of those aren't started intentionally.
It's just fire services, it's an ambulance.
No, ambulance service is covered under the CTAA. It's totally separate. If that $33 is what they're using though, to pay for fire and EMS. A portion of that goes to CTAA, a portion of that goes to the quad township fire association.
And we still have to have those people ready to go. So They're sitting there, they're still getting paid. So that's coming out of our budget.
Yes.
Okay.
So our fire department really didn't grow. We took on the townships. We didn't, well, we did it. We, at the time, we went from a 10 person minimum to an 11 person minimum staffing and then a few years later, we went back to the 10 person staffing. Costs per se. Yes, it does cost us to respond to those areas. So I would say at the end of the year, we're, we are still coming out of, that sounds wrong, we're making money, but we're, it's a benefit to us to keep the 132,000.
Okay.
Forego that. So He covered a lot of my capital stuff already, but I'll, I'll go through here. So for FY19, our fire equipment. That fire equipment line carries all of our, just miscellaneous stuff, turnout gear. If you look ahead, every year there's a 12,000 in there. But the firefighters need theirs replaced about every seven years, five to seven years, depending on their role. So that's what that's for. In addition to that, this year we're buying seven sections of five inch hose. One section of five inch hose, that's what we'd use to hook to a hydrant, 700 bucks. 24, nine there. We're buying some nozzles and one of the things I'm really glad that Jim let us put in there was it's included in that fire equipment line is to upgrade our hoods. So if you see guys out on a fire scene and they have a mask on, they have a fabric hood. And way back, we didn't even have those. You know, damage from the heat. That's really all they do. Well, they're finding out that they don't stop particulate. So a lot of soot and stuff gets through those. Rests in your, on your neck where it's real sweaty. And they're saying that contributes to firefighter cancer rates being so high. So you have a lot of glands in here. These are around $90 for a hood. So we're going to do it one time, replace everybody's hood. Some guys are just like, I'm not waiting for you to buy my new hood. And they've already went out and bought their own.
They need those hoods.
Yes, they need them. So that, that's about a $4,000 cost in this budget year. And then after that, that'll be the standard issue. So it's not like we're going to keep, they'll, they'll last for a long time. The hydraulic rams, those go with our other hydraulic tools like cutters, spreaders. A lot of people, it's Hearst tools, you know, for car accidents. A ram is just a big, it's hard to explain, but it's a, it's a real small tool that you hook hydraulics to and it gets Last equipment, we thought, we don't need rams anymore. We just use these tools to, the spreaders to do it, but they don't open far enough to do what we need them to do. So we've had several calls where we's like, we really need our rams back. So the rams that we, we quoted there, we, one for each first out engine to go along with the tools that are on it. Answer this last, just last, well, Donnie just sent them in yesterday and we asked for the rams on the grant. So hopefully, well, you know, we'll wait till we hear back, but hopefully we won't have to spend that money. We've been very successful on the, they call them micro grants, anything under 25,000. It seems like there's like, yep, you can have it. So hopefully that'll take care of that. Station, they took care of all the exterior work, but our hose tower. Which that picture down there in the right hand corner is from 2007. That's when the station was built. That hose tower's never had any work done on the inside of it, which is, it's the, I don't remember how you point this thing. This part right there is the hose tower. Orders all falling off. So we had a couple estimates done for 15,000. We can get that fixed. That's in there. And then I'll talk about the ambulance on the next slide. But I did want to talk about our new command car. That was in FY18's budget. It's down there now. We've had it for three or four weeks. We had 43,000 and some change set aside for that car. That's a 2018 Chevy Tahoe. Which I tried to go buy a new one for 43,000 to start. It's got brand new lights, brand new radios, all the graphics. We reused our commands, a slide out thing in the back. I really just like Bruce, and it wasn't just Bruce, but he was the, he was the leg person on this. He did all the work. It's a really, really nice command car and it's really sharp. He, he matched it all up to our last few vehicles. So if you, you put them side by side, the striping, the colors. Thank you for that, for getting that for us. So it looks really nice going down the road. Other things in our, well, no, this is the ambulance. So Jim talked about moving this ambulance up. And previous years, well, I think the last ambulance was around 190, 192,000. That's a lot of money for an ambulance. The base ambulance, same price, same ambulance that we've always had, well, the last two. Four wheel drive Ford F450 chassis and then the box like it was. The big cost is this. Ford F-four-fifty chassis and then the box, uh, like it was. The big cost is this power load system. Everybody buying a new ambulance, they're getting this in there. And their promotional material has this average back strain cost to the department seventy thousand dollars. I don't, I'm sure they're trying to sell this, so. But I believe it. When you're talking about five hundred calls a year per person, you, you're taking a tremendous number of calls and that's a lot of lifting, lowering of patients. Push them up, you push them out to the ambulance, a little arm comes out and hooks the cot. You battery the, the legs back up and they sit in midair like that. A patient up to seven hundred pounds can be suspended on your cot. And then you just push them in the ambulance. You just pull them out on the wheels, battery powered down. There's no lifting involved. So. That is our number one cause of injury at the fire department is lifting patients. And I'm sure we'll still have some because we gotta get them off the floor, onto the cot and, uh, but this'll, will surely help with that.
That's the way to go, man.
Can you add those apparatus to your current?
Yeah. So it's about a forty-one thousand dollar. I checked around, I thought, man, that was a lot of money. So I asked some other fire departments in Iowa. There's some people paying up to two hundred and ninety-five thousand for an ambulance. Uh, one of the Des Moines suburbs, he told me they paid two thirty-seven for very similar ambulances with this setup in it last year. So I think we're right in the ballpark.
That's needed. You know, as a matter of fact, you know, with the next time we're looking at another, another one, we oughta be probably looking at another one of those.
I, I think that's, he, he was like, every year it's gonna be more and more until, he thinks eventually it'll just be the standard. You buy an ambulance, that's what comes on the ambulance. And so I really think it's coming to, to be mandatory. Uh, the next five years, again, the turnout gear's in there every year for twelve thousand. The Knox box key secure devices. So fire department master keys. To track our master keys. It's a box in the ambulance. It's, we have them now. And you have to punch a code in there to get this key out. And so that tracks who and when that key was accessed. And that key is used on a lot of commercial buildings for us to get access if they have a fire alarm or they have a fire, water flowing.
CC campus, aren't they?
We can get in there. I, yes, they have their own, West Burlington is a different key than ours, but yeah, they have that. So we have that now. It's a great system. We need to keep it. The, the, the key thing we have in our ambulances now are all of our first-out vehicles. They're no longer supported by Knox. So. So we had it in this year's budget. We moved it back to FY twenty. As long as they're working, we're gonna keep using the ones we have. Uh, once they start failing, then we don't have any choice but to upgrade those. Uh, the FY twenty and twenty-three, I put those together kinda out of year order just because the fire engine has been in there. That was the other part of the grant we just did yesterday. So trying to get that on a grant, hopefully by twenty-twenty-three, we're replacing, uh, we're replacing a truck in nineteen ninety-three. So it's really old and we can think, you know, one of these days they're actually gonna, uh, let us get that. So. And mostly for the rural areas, but it, truthfully, we have areas in town that don't have hydrants where we have to supply water. So, uh, that's, that's what that's for. Those two vehicles together will allow us to get rid of at least three of the vehicles we have now. So we can avoid some duplication, some maintenance costs. Four, at least three, maybe four of the vehicles that we have now. If you go in our stations, they're just, they're jam-packed full of vehicles. There's no, you couldn't fit something else in there. So. And then the ambulance that was in there every three years. And then, uh, twenty and twenty-four, I put in there the chief and the fire marshal. I put them in there kind of as a placeholder. I don't know, maybe in twenty-twenty-two, the fire marshal's car needs replaced. So that's what that's in there for. So. And I base those costs, I think I had twenty-five thousand. That was based off that state bid for, uh, a pickup, I believe. Training. Again, every year, we're trying to do something different with our training. We don't have a dedicated training officer. So we try to do the best we can, but every firefighter needs sixteen hours of training a month in firefighter training. The officers need officer training. The EMTs already covered all the training that they need. So it's a lot of time that we spend training in. Around a hundred, or just a little over a hundred hours per person per year on training. And then fire prevention, man, we, we have a lot of dreams on fire prevention, things we would love to be able to do. Uh, but it's just, it's really not possible. Uh, so a lot of that does fall on Mark to do the inspections. We've, people have seen us out buying smoke detectors while we're, yeah, we're buying them, but we're not using city, you're not funding the smoke detector. That's all been grant dollars. That's been Elks doing fundraising, stuff like that. So it's been, I mean, yes, we're spending our time on duty putting them in, but it is way worthwhile to do that program. So. And then firefighter health and safety. Yes, that's a department priority. And I'm way behind on my notes here. That is also one of my personal priorities, trying to keep our guys, you know, healthy, mentally, physically. And I said, we got physicals in this, uh, FY nineteen budget for the people over thirty-six. I wish we could do it for everybody. Now our health insurance covers basic physicals every year, but it's a different one than what you would get if I send you out to Great River to business health and say, this guy's a firefighter, here's his job description. Function testing. So if you're off for more than thirty days before they can come back to work, they go out and they get evaluated to make sure that they're physically able to come back and do the job. Um, we're trying to address the long-term mental health issues of our people. It's a very hard nut to crack and figure out. Our business because of mental health reasons. So, um, we're working on that. And then physical fitness. There's our gym with the new updated floor. We just, the guys put that in over the weekend. That was all, uh, grant money from AFG from last year. So we got all new flooring, a bunch of the equipment that you can't really see. Well worth the investment. Uh, the other thing is, I still gotta say thanks to Great River. They're still sending trainers. This is like two years into this. It is awesome. And every day, you know, I worked out with them the other day. I think there were six or seven people. So Monday, Wednesday, Friday. You know, let's see who can improve these metrics the most in the next three months and then give us prizes and stuff like that. So it has been, that has been great for our department. So that's it. I'm done.
All right, kids. Questions for the chief? Provide services for the city of West Burlington and, and a lot of that's on, based on call volume. But do you feel like the compensation is where it needs to be in order to be able to, to warn us, providing those services to West Burlington on a total cost? Stand, from a total cost standpoint? Putting an, an ambulance in West Burlington, are we being reimbursed for the time that the, the people are sitting out there waiting for us? Or are we just relying on the fact that we're providing better call times to people in West?
In Burlington. Yeah. So it's definitely worth it, what they're paying us to, to do the coverage. It's not what they're paying us, but it's what. I'm guessing it's maybe a little better than the payer mix in Burlington. I don't know if that sounds right, but you, you know what I mean? I mean, you'd have to look and see who's paying what for the calls there. But, um, yeah, if you cut out, I think we were somewhere around the forty calls a month range to West Burlington. Whatever that revenue is, that'd be a huge hit to our service overall. And I would know how you would absorb that.
Sure.
Chief, my question would be on that CTAA contract, right? You said add three to six positions. So if you add three positions, do you have an idea what that changes financially?
Of the net cost for ambulance service provision. And so we charge twelve individuals to the ambulance department. When it comes to the CTAA agreement, we also charge some of our overheads. Uh, we charge for a portion of Dana's time, a portion of the chief's time. Made sense to allocate towards it. Was there another category, Stephanie, that we charged there or not? No. So we add those together, look at what the net cost of operations are. If it's a hundred thousand dollars net cost, uh, we then look at the rolling average for the last three years, what percentage of calls has been in the CTAA group? Ten percent of that. So if it's a hundred thousand dollar net cost, when you take, put in those other costs along with the, the actual twelve people, they're, they're gonna pay seventeen thousand. Um, we're gonna cover the other nine, eighty-three thousand. So if you add. Hundred thousand as a comparison, uh, the impact of the CTAA as a whole would be, um, fifty-one thousand that they would cover out of that. See, and I think that's a realistic type number to have a discussion on with them. And I don't know where they would be on that, how they would respond to. Realistic and what we, what we provide. We can go back and look a couple of years ago when we first put this formula in place. That their portion, their seventeen percent net cost, uh, was in this, a little over sixty thousand. And it's now down to, this last year was closer to thirty thousand. Share's gone down and it makes sense that, well, there's increased revenue because there's more time being spent by personnel. There should be more personnel allocated towards this formula. And I think that's very realistic.
Not quite. They're paying a portion of the capital. They're not paying seventeen percent.
So the capital budget. It really should be closer to thirteen to fourteen, probably. I mean, we'd have to look at what we're doing with the, with the, how you're changing the cots and how, how that, what that impact looks like moving forward. But that, that's something, that's another area that we need to identify as part of discussion. Through twenty-three, I think that, that there was a, there, I think there's a spot to renegotiate sooner than that. And I didn't look, I know you forwarded me a copy of the.
Yes, it's, it's actually coming up. I believe it goes through twenty-nineteen.
Yeah. And that matches pretty well with where the safer grant funding goes off.
On page six, you said that, um, for, and I can see this is advantageous. You pull a paramedic and an ambulance on every type of scene. Is that multiple vehicles? Or I'm just trying to capture the picture of that.
Yeah. So, you know, of course, ambulance calls get ambulances, but. Speaking to people, well, any fire that we go on, car fire, anything, you need more than those two people. So instead of taking them off the ambulance and putting them on the engine, they drive the ambulance to the call. So yeah, maybe mileage-wise would make more sense. You'd save money by putting them on the same vehicle. The problem is why they're out there, they're probably gonna get an ambulance call. Went out for training or, uh, went somewhere like that. We would take people off the engine and say, you know, don't go on the engine, bring the extra ambulance. Cause what are we gonna need? We're gonna need an ambulance most likely for our next call. So.
Or that call.
Or that call, or that call. Yes.
Cause one of your guys.
Point guard. Thank you. Oh, they're hot off the press, huh? Still warm. I got you. Um, yeah.
Hey man, you keep, you keep getting on my side.
What are you talking about? Do I keep working my way this way?
You're working your way over here.
I keep working my way.
I used to have a like.
Used to have a what?
A whole corner to myself.
Well, you don't have a whole corner to yourself.
Can I borrow your, your stamp? Please?
This is the greatest thing I've ever.
Yeah, you couldn't bring concessions.
Well, I couldn't do both.
Did I not promote a potluck for these types of events?
Out of order.
Trying to be a slickster, huh? Peanut butter popcorn? I had nothing to do with it.
I needed a tutorial. Yeah.
Okay.
All right, ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Quite as long. That's my, my goal for sure. Um, so I appreciate your time. Um, I'm gonna give an overview of our budget like the other departments have. I'll try to put those numbers in context that, um, you've been given. Discuss our operations a little and then also talk just briefly about our future focus with our new strategic plan. plan. If you don't have questions tonight, um, feel free to contact me in the future with things that come up, so. Um, I always like to start by putting up our, our mission. Each department has its own unique role to play in making Burlington a great place to live, work, and play, and for the library. Their lives, um, is important to us. Our mission, um, sums that up, is creating opportunities for all people to come together, to connect, to learn, and to imagine the futures before them. Um, so I always see that as, our role is to be there for people to be successful in whatever it is that they are trying to do. Location to get a job, it could be helping them to find a book to train their new puppy, whatever it is they need in that moment to be successful and move their lives forward. Um, that's what we want to do, we want to help them with. So, um, that is, our bigger picture is building success for people and helping them build their lives. You know, we, we try to keep those kind of bigger picture things in mind, but it always comes down then to those, those numbers. The way that I do, um, budget planning is to work in collaboration with the library board of directors, as it is really their, um, their role to, to set, um, where we spend money. What are, where are we at this year, and what that, what is that gonna look like next year to maintain what we currently have? Um, and so we, I'm gonna start here just with our, our bottom line. Um, our current budget, you can see, and what we're, um, have in this year's fiscal nineteen budget. We're asking for in this. Um, as everyone has talked about, um, Jim, from the beginning with the overview and the other departments, um, because each department relies so much on personnel, it's a big driver of our budgets, when there's insurance increases and all of those things, staying in the same place still possible more, so that's why. That number, um, for fiscal year nineteen, the budget proposal is at the same equivalent level to where we were in fiscal year oh-eight, um, in terms of expenditures. So some of how we've been able to make those kind of things happen, um, is, you know, we have. Including some reducing of hours, um, and reducing of staff, some things I'll talk about as we go along. But, um, one of the other things is being in our, our current facility, being all on one floor, really does create a lot of efficiencies. Also having RFID tagging in our books. Um, another picture of where our expenditures have been is this, um, looking at the percent change. Um, you can see those years where we took, um, some deep cuts and made a lot of changes, um, for a couple of years there. For the last few years, we have been in the same. This is the budget to, um, to maintain the, the staffing level, and you see that in the sheets that you have, you can, you can see, um, where we're at with staffing, and I'll talk more about that, too, as we go along. When it comes to revenue, um, also, you can see we've got a little ups and downs here. Is because we developed some long-term twenty-eight E agreements with West Burlington, um, Des Moines County for their rural residents, and with Middletown for, um, for their residents to provide library services. And those contracts, um, are, they're ten years in length, we've got a few more years on those. Um, revenue, and not have as many ups and downs as we did earlier in there. So when you take the expenditures, um, and reduce that amount by the revenues that we bring in, the general fund impact, it's actually less in fiscal year nineteen. So we mentioned personnel is always the, the biggest driver, I think for all of our departments, it's, it's a big piece. And, um, I'm really just copy and paste it here, we are not making any changes in terms of personnel, um, numbers, so just to give you a breakdown of how our personnel line up. And, um, at that time, we had over twenty-one, almost twenty-two FTE, so we've gone down by about five full-time equivalencies in the ti, in the last fifteen years. Most of that being in those years where we had some significant decreases in our budget. We have two people who work administratively, um, of course, I'm one of those, I'm the full-time person in that, I'm the one, and then our half-time person is Sarah, who's our office coordinator.
Sarah's only a half of a person? I think that's kinda rude, Rhonda.
No, she is, she is way more than that. We are so fortunate to have her. Some things, and changed that to a half-time position. I was really concerned about finding someone with the right skills, who would want only part-time. Um, we really, we really hit, hit big though with her. She's done a great job, we're really fortunate, she wants part-time, she does a wonderful job for us, so. That, with statistics and reports and all those fun things, scheduling, the staff development. Um, I had a friends of the library meeting today, I'm the liaison to that, the foundation, I work with our board of trustees, who, by the way, I, I mentioned working with the board of trustees and collaborating, then I forgot to point out. We divide into three teams. We used to have four teams. Um, one of the things that I think, um, is good, as you could say, is good, is a sort of a silver lining, um, and when you're losing staffing positions, is that we were able to do it all through attrition. Um, so when we had staff personally. But we used to have four teams a few years ago, and now, um, we instead have organized them into three teams. So each team has a team coordinator, a leader, um, and then, um, a mix of full and half-time people that work, um, to make everything happen. So our youth and family services team. Port, I'm sure I touched on a lot of them. I did throw in the picture up here of our last fortnight, because tomorrow night we're doing another fortnight, so I need to put in a little mention of that, if anybody's interested in coming and building a fort with their family somewhere in the library, reading, having some snacks.
Fortnight.
Yeah. Together, um, and we hold those after hours. But you can see, they do a wide range of things. Um, they serve from birth to age eighteen, and, um, that's not a real long span of years, but as we all know, that's a very diverse group of people. Um, so doing things for the littlest ones, babies, and young women, up through teenagers, too. So they're out running around, yeah.
Rhonda, what's, what are you doing for before and after-school outreach?
Oh, um, Becky, um, primarily, Becky Ruberg goes to the before and after-school program, um, and she's been doing that for years, since, since before they had the grant to expand to some schools. Schools have them. So we go to North Hill for their before-school program, and this year, because they've expanded more, they're trying to get to all the different ones, um, and, and do different projects. They go and they read, they do projects, it's kind of taking a storytime to them.
Yeah.
Um, for the teens, she would go and do different. To, um, the classrooms at the middle schools and, and does, um, book talks with them every month, and she's definitely one who is out of the building as much as she is in, in the building. Um, one of the other things I should mention is that we assign people to one of these three teams based on what their main activity is when they're not on. You know, books to people, you'll see us out there, um, you know, helping out at those main service desks. So we, we move around a lot, and we do a lot of cross-training. It's part of what makes it possible for us to get a lot done, um, with our reduced staff and with so many different things going on. Um, really, this team, um, doesn't get a lot of recognition because most of the work they do is behind the scenes. It's, um, if you went on the tour, it's that, that basement group, that lower-level group, um, that does things like ordering the books and, um, cataloging the books and getting them prepared to go upstairs. Those, um, folks do anywhere from four to sixteen hours in a week, plus a rotating Saturday, um, so very part-time. Um, so when you see there's ten people in this group, four of those are, are very part-time, and a few of the others are, um, half-time people. Um, the technology piece, in terms of. Administrator for our network, she takes care of the servers, she works with all the different vendors and all the different software companies, and gets the wireless going, all those different things. Um, so we're very reliant on her, um, and she does a great job with all of that, but it is a lot of, a lot of work to do with all staff. Work with customers and, um.
You got a half a person that, uh, that's backing her up on that techy stuff?
Don't even have a half person backing her up, no, I, we, she, um, does train a lot of other staff members on different pieces of it, so, um, but we would, we are very reliant on her, she does a wonderful job. Get our help desk, so reference and referral, um, checking out materials, dealing with new accounts, and, um, all of those things, but also the adult programs that we do promoting, um, through our newsletter, I gave you a copy of the January newsletter with your packet there, um, doing all social media, all those kinds of things. The folks that are assigned here are ones that their primary off-desk duties are supporting this, like the homebound delivery service, we have a part-time person who does that, um, besides working most of her, most of her hours at the customer service desk. Is, um, we looked at our, a change that we'd made in the past to see if it was still the right change to have made. So several years ago, when we were in the middle of budget cuts and things, we had our maintenance person retire, we still have a full-time person on staff who did that. And, um, instead of hiring someone that's full-time. So this year, um, our finance, um, committee with the board said, we should look at that, are we still saving by doing that? So if we take those two pots, what we pay for property maintenance, and we pay for the cleaning contract, and put them together, could we hire a person again? Um, so thanks to Stephanie who helped me with that, we looked at those numbers and found that we're really optimistic about that. Place where we might, um, want to make a change in the future. You know, we found that, um, we have, we have a great cleaning crew, um, so we're really fortunate to have them, if we were to lose them, we might need to relook at this. Um, and we've had a lot of advantages, I think, with using property maintenance. Because when you call up and you have multiple people, they can send two people to work on a project. Um, so that's worked out really well for us, so we are staying with, with that and not making any changes to that. But I wanted to let you know, we are looking at those kind of things on a regular basis to see, is this still the right way to go? Are there other changes we should be making?
Cause that's your first telltale sign, but, uh, I don't, I didn't see any drop-off, so whoever your cleaning staff is, they are taking care of business.
They, yeah, they do a great job, and I'll say, um, you know, for myself, a little bit changed when we went to not having somebody full-time in the building, I'm sort of the main.
You have a head you sweeping for a while.
Facilities end of things, my job isn't to know how to fix it or to fix it, it's to know who to call. And I've got that down, so I just, um, make sure to see what's happening with everything in the building, and, and call the right people, so.
Hopefully you have a book that would tell you how to.
That's right, if I need to. On this was, we took a look and saw, okay, what was it gonna take to just stay with the same level of staffing that we have, leaving everything the same? Well, because of the just increases you have every year, um, insurance and all those things, the staffing piece of it went up. Harder each year, um, to find a few areas that we could decrease. So we did decrease what we are looking for in our operating expenditures, um, in order to offset that, um, increase in personnel. So our overall, um, increase is smaller than it would have been if we had changed it. There was the, the cuts to the budget, there's a big drop-off. Uh, we've been kind of holding steady the last few years, but went down just a little bit again. It's get, like I say, it does get harder every year, though, because this covers our building expenses, um, our technology expenses. We work hard to find free webinars, so that we don't have to have the travel expense and, um, those kind of things, so we can still get a lot of training in without as much expense. Um, and then the collections, obviously, we're a library, we want to have things people to be able to check out, that's all a piece of this, too. One of the things that we're looking at right now, that we hope. Pieces of that, uh, we want to do the whole thing, um, and that could be some potential savings on that facility piece of our operating expenditures.
The, and to point out what Rhonda's talking about, when you see the, this operating expenditures, it was up at the four-fifty and it went down to the two.
My next slide.
And, yeah, cause I wanted to point out this here, too.
I thought, uh, it was purchasing.
Yeah, yeah. Purchasing for materials for the, like, books and things for the collection, right?
Oh, excuse me.
Yeah. So, yeah, that is my next slide, that's exactly what I was thinking to Jim. Which is not the way I wanted, I want things to go, I'm always trying to like, let's put a little bit more into that. Um, but I wanted to explain a little why we were able to do some of that this year. So I broke it down. So I broke it down into a pie chart here so you can see where our collection money goes to. The majority, my bet, is only to our use materials. The subscriptions part is where we made the bigger reduction this year. And that is because we got a very nice gift through the Community Foundation. Might have read about it a while back, but the Mickelson Fund was developed and through the Community Foundation, we were one of the first. Was someone who came to use the library almost every day. And what he was using it for was to read the newspapers and occasionally a magazine. So we decided to do is buy all of our newspaper subscriptions out of this funding each year. So that took that out of the budget here. Also, the Wall Street Journal and the New York Times and the Quad City Times that we subscribe to and others and sit by that nice big window with a cup of coffee and read a paper. So thanks to that gift, we're able to do that. We've also tried to supplement what we can do here with collection purchases with things like applying to the financials league. Put book plates in in memory of people. So there's different things that we try to do to keep up our level of collection purchasing. Because it is really a very important part of what we do.
I know, it's just got to be killing you to see that.
For other possibilities and ways to bring more materials into the collection. One other area, as you know from when I've talked before about our annual reports and things, is a big piece of what we do or offer classes and events for families and adults to come and do things together with the library. Prizes, any of those kinds of things that we do for classes and events or any funding in there for our summer reading program. Summer reading program has not had that in the past, we used to have a very small amount for presenter fees and things like that. So the way that we're able to make this happen is thanks to our. This month was an unusual one, I only had about $400 worth of things to ask for this month, but last month it was $5,000 worth of things. So they fund quite a few things like the presenters, but also we have digital signs in the building, we have security cameras. The Friends members preview sale and next Saturday, not this coming Saturday, but the one after the 27th, 28th.
Book sales are like that.
That's the book sale. So they raise all their funds through their three big book sales, through the footnote shop and through the trivia night, which they just had last week. Ticos kids on this slide because one of the other things I always say is if you come to a program and there's food at it, it's because of the friends. But now the Ticos group is raising a lot of their own money. So if you come to a teen program and there's food, it's because you've bought pop out of the machine in the lobby. Handy flags on their route. They make a little money to spend on their own programs. So I'm very proud of that group, they've really taken on themselves to make sure that there's funding for the kinds of things that they want to do. And it's given them a lot of leadership experience and things like that too. Quickly ask for anything for the capital improvement plan. There were some years that we did, if you go back far enough, we used to get some money for replacing computers through there. That's something that went away pretty early on. The reason that we can still replace our computers is because of our foundation group. And they have funds each year from their earnings that they then, we ask for specific things for and they gift us with different things. So in fiscal year 17, they gave over $100,000. So when we need computer replacement, we go to them. Special projects, those are the kinds of things that they fund. We also have funded some improvements, the library, through grants. One recently, the Paint Iowa Beautiful Grant, we've been doing that every few years to get the whole building repainted.
Some of the others where you have some expenditures and we have other funds, trust and agency funds where we will take the income in from the group. We will make the expenditures, but it doesn't hit any of, it doesn't hit our normal operating supplies, but we have to make sure that we allocate. Stephanie in that neighborhood for different items from the dog park to this, I mean, just an assortment of different things that people give some special money towards.
Right, and we found with that. Through there, it gets paid, so you do see all that money go through.
But it doesn't go through your normal operating budget.
No, it doesn't. Go through that trust line.
It's a separate account that.